Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Today, we would like to continue the public hearings of the Committee of the Whole. And will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill Number 130489, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 19-2500 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Real Estate Non-Immunization Tax by Changing Certain Tax Rates All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," Bill Number 130724, Amending Chapter 19-1300 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Real Estate Taxes by Authorizing a School Reform Commission to Determine Whether Certain Tax Resemptions from School District of Philadelphia Real Estate Taxes Shall Continue and by Making Technical Corrections All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," Bill Number 140140, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Wage and Net Profits Tax by Decreasing the Rate or Rates of the Tax Imposed Upon Certain Low-Income Persons Providing for Refunds of Excess Taxes Paid," Directing the Revenue Department to Develop Procedures in Form Whereby Eligible Taxpayers Can Obtain Such Refunds, and Requiring Employers to Provide Refund Forms to Employees All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," Bill Number 140144, An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2015 Through 2020 Inclusive, Bill Number 140145, An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2015 Capital Budget, Bill Number 140146, An Ordinance Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, Bill Number 140147, An Ordinance Amending Section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to Further Authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to Impose a Tax on the Use or Occupancy of Real Estate Within the School District of Philadelphia Under Certain Terms and Conditions," Bill Number 140148, An Ordinance Amending Section 19-1801 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Authorization of Tax to Further Authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to Impose a Tax on Real Estate Within the City of Philadelphia Under Certain Terms and Condition," and Resolution Number 140159, Providing for the Approval by this Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2015 Through 2019 and Incorporating Proposed Changes With Respect to Fiscal Year 2014, Which Is to Be Submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, The Authority Pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement Authorized by an Ordinance of this Council Approved by the Mayor on January 3rd, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, By and Between the City and the Authority.
Thank you very much. First of all and foremost, welcome. We are glad to have you here. As stewards of the taxpayers' money, it is important, in fact, it is vital, that we hear from you. People often set priorities based on what they think is important. Today is about hearing what you think is important. So we welcome you here, and I have to do the ground rules to let everyone know. First of all, we have 66 people scheduled to testify just for the morning. We will take a break after that session and then come back and hear the rest of people that will be signed up to testify. We have at least five schools that are here in chambers today, and we welcome you particularly. We have Dobbins, Meredith, Orden Reed, George Washington, and M.O.T.E.P. Charter. Did I miss anybody? A dare. Okay, we have a dare. Say, well, I can't hear you. You'll say it when you come up. All right. So we welcome you all, and we would like to also say that when you come up to the witness stand, the clerk will call your name. You'll come up to the witness stand and please say your name for the record so that we can know who's testifying. All speakers who are signed up must speak to the issue of the budget, and that includes whatever issues you may have about school funding. So we're going to, also joining me is Chairwoman of the Education Committee, Janie Blackwell. My name is Councilman Jones, and you have other members of council here today, Councilman Kenny, Councilman Good, and Councilman Greenlee. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Blackwell, who will open the proceedings.
Good morning. Thank you all. Sorry to hold you up, and we will begin. I'm going to call in groups of three.
So we'll call in groups of three. Please come up to the witness table.
Mary Dean, Jerry Jordan, and Julie Slavitt. Mary Dean, Jerry Jordan, and Julie Slavitt. Pete Matthews, Dr. Walter Palmer.
Welcome. Welcome.
And Ted Kirsch.
Good morning.
Beverly DeSir. Leah Harms. Leah Harms.
Welcome. Again, good morning. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Good morning. I'm Jerry Jordan, President of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. Good morning. I want to thank the Education Committee, Chairwoman Blackwell, and the entire City Council for allowing me to speak on behalf of the members of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, who work every day to provide a quality education for our city's children. I also would like to extend my appreciation of the work you have done to develop sustainable funding solutions for our public schools. I also thank you for your transparency, accountability, and accessibility to Philadelphia's taxpayers, and for encouraging citizens to share with you their thoughts and recommendations on the issues that face our city. While I always welcome the opportunity to address council and educational issues, it's unfortunate that we once again find ourselves trying to solve a school district financial crisis that has persisted for over a decade. I don't need to outline the impact of budget cuts on our schoolchildren. Everyone in this room is aware that our children have lost an unacceptable number of teachers, librarians, school nurses, secretaries, and counselors, along with academic offerings like art, music, and other programs. I also don't need to spend a great deal of time identifying who was primarily responsible for the current financial crises. Clearly, if Pennsylvania had a funding formula for education that guaranteed sustainable funding for our schools, our crises would not be as dire. The projected deficit for the 2014-15 school year is both staggering and frustrating. Staggering because it means we are sending our children to what can hardly be called schools, and frustrating because when I sat here last year, I noted that we would be in this position again if Harrisburg did not step up to its obligation to fully fund our schools. The state has once again come up short, and our children will once again pay the price. Throughout this crisis, various council members have put forth ideas for generating sustainable revenue for our public schools. Today, I would like to speak briefly about and express the PFT support for some of the significant and oftentimes creative measures introduced by this honorable body as sustainable means of funding our schools. We have submitted a summary of these items for the record. The PFT supports the passage of Bill 140207, the coin-operated parking meter rate hike introduced on March 20th by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for Councilman Jones. While the $1 million in annual revenue doesn't sound like much in the face of a $440 million deficit, these funds could pay for non-teaching assistance at two-thirds of our high schools, which would greatly improve school safety and climate. We also support Councilman Kenny's Resolution 140211, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Jones, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Good, Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Swilla. This would authorize the Committee on Education to hold hearings regarding installing slot machines at Philadelphia International Airport. While we understand that slot machines are certainly a controversial topic, the millions of dollars they generate would be a tremendous help to our school district. As Councilman Kenny stated, we can't expect the $27 to $30 million in revenue recognized at Las Vegas Airport, but we could achieve one-third of that, around $10 million. It would increase the number of librarians in our schools by more than 700%. Instead of the 16 librarians, 16 librarians we have currently serving Philadelphia students, a woefully inadequate number, we would be able to have 116 librarians in our schools. Bill 140132, introduced by Councilwoman Kione Sanchez and co-sponsored by Councilman Jones and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, would authorize an additional percentage of real estate taxes to be designated for the school district of Philadelphia. The estimated $53 million per year in revenue would not only provide a full-time nurse at every single school, it could also fund an additional staff member for every school, whether it's a counselor, a teacher, a non-teaching assistant. With a slight mileage shift, each and every school would be able to recover two essential staff members. This is a significant measure. Councilman Good's Bill, Number 130724, calls for an amendment of the current tax code to allow the SRC to determine whether certain tax abatements can continue. This could net $2 million per year for our schools. We appreciate Councilman Good's recognition that the very wealthy and big businesses should certainly pay their fair share in taxes. We recognize his efforts to fine-tune an abatement bill that would improve the lives of Philadelphia's schoolchildren. The estimated $2 million in annual revenue is funding that could enable half of Philadelphia's schools to enlist the support of an additional supportive service assistant to help our children in the classroom. And finally, the PFT stands in support of an extension of the 1% sales tax, and we will diligently lobby our legislators in Harrisburg to pass the cigarette tax. We believe that an amount totaling $120 million should result from this measure. $120 million in additional funding would provide for more than five additional full-time teachers at every single school in the school district. Schools would, could restore cuts to art, music, world languages, special education services, and extracurricular activities. We recognize that the $420 million may come as part of a package deal, and we also appreciate the fact that a more significant percentage of this funding will go towards schools in the earlier years of the plan. While our goal is to see $120 million in sustainable annual funding go towards schools as a result of this arrangement, we also hope that by the time a potential 50-50 split is realized, that a weighted funding formula will have been reinstated. I would like to close by once again thanking council for the work you all have been doing on the issue of education funding, and for continuing to make yourselves visible and accountable to Philadelphia's citizens. Perhaps if the SRC was held equally accountable to taxpayers, there would be a greater desire on the part of the commission to accomplish its intended mission, guiding us through fiscal crises and acting as an advocate in Harrisburg for adequate and sustainable education funding. The PFT appreciates council's willingness to put forth new and creative ideas to fund public schools and to present them to the public for discussion and debate. We hope that you will continue to engage the PFT in these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. You always have excellent testimony, on the point, and as you know, we were at your press conference where we talked about a change, and where we talked about trying to come up with people who are involved with the school district to serve on the school board, and we certainly support that and your point of view. Thank you very much for your consistent leadership. Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Chairman Blackwell, and co-council Curtis Jones and other council members. I'm here today as the director of the Palmer Foundation, the founder of the Leadership Learning Partners Charter School, and what I want to do is, to save time, is sort of paraphrase my statements that I made to the SRC on the 25th or so of last month. This deals with the issue of the request by the superintendent for the revocation of the Leadership School Charter. To set the background, clearly, this is an issue around the budget. What we find that common time and again, that the school district has constantly referred to the charter school growth enrollment as a way of somehow undermining their budget. Historically, America has provided public education for all children. All unborn children have a pot of money, if you want to make it that way, sitting there for them to go to the school of their choice. That is, public schools. The state legislature created the public schools as they're, as a creature of the state legislature. The state legislature created charter schools as a creature of the state legislature as a public school. So consequently, parents then are able to make a decision for the child as to what public school they want to go to, and the money follows the child. So in no way does, in fact, the charter school impinge, infringe, or deny the public education or district money. When charter schools were established, they were established to be able to create opportunities for parents by school choice. It also meant that what happened is, they would create some opportunities for the traditional public schools to grow and improve based on best practices. Our school, which is sitting down in North Philadelphia, between 2000 and 2015-14, we've grown from 300 children to 1,300 children. They come from 17 of the 18 poetry-performing zip codes. They're 75% are black, 20% are Hispanic or Latino, 5% are white. They're 100% free and reduced lunch, 75% are single parents, 250 of those children are special ed. We take the children that nobody wants, and consequently, we will always have a coaster roller in terms of how they perform. The idea that I want to address too, that came out in terms of revocation, one was the fact that we had a budget of $2.9 million. Charter schools get 25% to 30% of every dollar taken off the top. Since we were in this charter school operation, the school district has saw fit to find a way in which to try to deny us our own growth. We were renewed in 2005. We renewed again in 2010. In each instance, the school district of Philadelphia attempted to cap us so that they would not allow us to grow, but somehow saw they could use any money that we would have gotten near to their budget. We then raised the question of the cap and sued. We were able to win $1.3 million over $1.7 million suit, but in the meantime, the failure of us being paid our money timely meant that the district somehow was able to benefit from some injury. So over the years, that $2.9 million has really been laid at the feet of the district for failure to be able to pay us our money and on timely. Another question they raised was the fact that we had a, they claimed $700,000 shortfall in this past year, based on reconciliation. We were in the process of negotiating with them, with the consent of the superintendent, to find a way, as all charter schools do, to do reconciliation. We said 500, they said 700. We were not allowed to continue the process, and consequently, they called for a revocation of our charter. I simply want to state this, that in no way at all has our school ever been not done things that was within the code of ethics, nor have we made any attempt to mismanage or misappropriate funds, an illusion that was made towards our school, and consequently, we will fight against those. In my testimony, I said, then I say now, we tried hard to talk about how we could find a pathway towards resolution. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Klein met with me for two hours, and at the end of that meeting last, a month, two months ago, he found that we were, in fact, prepared to sit down and talk about ways to have resolution. I said that to Bill Green when he called me on the 21st. I said, not knowing the fact that the court had already ruled on the, he called me the 22nd, the court already ruled on the 21st that it was illegal for the charter, or SRC, to put caps on charters or to change the rules. This is about how to punish one charter school in order to force all other charter schools to comply, and it is patently unfair. We were never so given due notice. On the 22nd, I get a call from Bill Green, and in the course of the day, they begin the process of having press conferences, sending robo calls to all of our families, trying to get teachers to leave and come into the district, and disrupt the entire life of these children. Patently unfair. I still stand here before you to try to find a pathway to resolution, but let me make this very clear. I'm 80 years old. I've been in every major fight in this nation for social justice. I have never retreated. And when I can no longer talk, I'll spit. When I can no longer punch, I'll scratch. When I can no longer run, I will cop or skip. When I can no longer do that, I will crawl. But I will never crawl into the night, I will never shrink, I will never resist the chance to fight against what I consider to be injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer, and as you know, we believe in due process. It's what this country was founded on. Everybody has a right to due process, and we look forward to you getting your opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Good morning. My name's Beverly DeSir, and I am a nurse, the mother of an adult child who's allergic to fluoride, and I am here on behalf of the residents of Philadelphia who do not want fluoride added to our water system. Thank you for the opportunity to speak while you are considering the new budget. An excellent way to save money would be to end water fluoridation. How did we arrive at the 60-year policy of adding a chemical to our water that is so toxic a spoonful could kill an adult? Why do we add a hazardous chemical to our water when it does nothing to improve water quality? By looking at the history of water fluoridation, we can understand how this egregious policy came into existence. As manufacturing of aluminum and steel began to increase after the turn of the century, industry began to have a serious issue with fluoride. Lawsuits over fluoride damage go back as far as 1855 in Germany. The first disaster was in Belgium in 1930 when fluoride from factory emissions, trapped by a weather inversion, killed 60 people and injured several thousand. The lawsuits also began from the continuous emissions of these factories, which were crippling cattle and people, damaging vegetation and ruining health. Factory workers were devastated and died young. Scientists studied fluoride and found it to be an aggressive poison. There had been speculation since the 19th century that since fluoride was deposited in teeth and bones, it made them stronger. But in 1925, Johns Hopkins researchers fed fluoride to rats and found it made their teeth weaker. The leading Danish fluoride scientist saw the same result. Workers' teeth with the most fluoride were the weakest. But corporate America had a plan to combat their many lawsuits. The titans of industry, DuPont, Alcoa, US Steel, Reynolds Aluminum, funded two laboratories to produce the science to protect and enhance their profits, the Mellon Institute and the Kettering Laboratory. These labs also approved as safe asbestos, leaded gas, and Freon, which is made from fluoride. After World War II, more corporations formed the Fluorine Lawyers Committee, which shepherded fluoride into our water. Their premise was, if the Department of Health is putting it in our water, how can fluoride be bad for you? That is the strategy behind water fluoridation, and lawyers have used this in defensive industry and courtrooms for fluoride poisoning of individuals. There is documented proof that in 1937, the American Dental Association chairman offered sufficient information to General Motors in return for $25,000. The ADA continues to receive millions of dollars from the consumption of fluoride products. Finally, when the Manhattan Project needed vast amounts of fluoride for their weapons, federal government support of fluoride and water fluoridation was complete. It is 2014, time to understand fluoridation's corrupt history and end the policy. Save money and protect the residents of Philadelphia by ending water fluoridation. Thank you, and give the money to the schools.
Thank you. Identify yourself. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leah Harms.
Pull your mic closer, we can hear you.
Hello, my name is Leah Harms, and I'm also going to speak on fluoride. First off, thank you for allowing me to speak here today, and just for the record, I'm a librarian and a researcher. I will highlight several concerns I have with adding fluoride chemicals to the public water supply, and why I think it must stop as soon as possible. First off, fluoride is highly toxic substance. Consider, for example, the poison warning that the FDA now requires on all fluoride toothpastes sold in the U.S., or the tens of millions of people throughout China and India who now suffer serious crippling bone diseases from drinking water with elevated levels of fluoride. The FDA does not approve fluoride as a drug for ingestion. The CDC says on their website that it only works topically, that is, you brush with it, you do not need to drink it. Fluide is not a nutrient, and the human body does not need it for any biological function. In terms of acute toxicity, the dose that can cause immediate toxic consequences, fluoride is more toxic than lead, but slightly less toxic than arsenic. This is why fluoride has long been used in rodenticides and pesticides, to kill pests like rats and insects. It is also why accidents involving overinjection of fluoridated dental products, including fluoride gels, fluoride supplements, and fluoridated water can cause serious poisoning incidents, including death. Illness and death have also been documented in communities where the water supplier accidentally added too much, and the public was not alerted in time. There is no reason we are still adding this industrial waste product to our public water supplies. In fact, only 5% of the world's population consumes fluoridated water, and of those 350 million people, 200 million are million people, 200 million are Americans. Virtually all of European nations have stopped water fluoridation, or never started it because of concerns over ethics and negative health impacts. Their populations have the same or lower rates of dental careys as fluoridated nations. Therefore, it would seem something else must be the cause of improved dental health over the last several decades, such as better nutrition and oral hygiene. Fluoridating the water is a great waste of money when it appears to make no difference to rates of dental decay in developed nations. You may like to hear that Dallas City Council is currently considering ending their fluoridation program to save around $1 million. Their population is smaller than ours, so the savings for the city the size of Philadelphia could be even higher. So, not only can we save over $1 million a year, but we will also ensure that our children, our elderly, and our seriously ill citizens are not being overdosed with fluoride chemicals. There is no other drug that is allowed in the water because, as every good doctor knows, there is no way to control the dose once it is in the water we drink, cook with, and bathe in. The amount of fluoride someone gets per day depends on their habits, and there is no way to ensure people are not getting way too much. In fact, approximately 41% of American youths now have dental fluorosis, a clear sign that they have way too much fluoride in their bodies, including in their bones and soft tissue, not just their teeth. It is also considered now a developmental neurotoxin based on a very recent Harvard study. And finally, it is a civil right to decide what medicines we take, and that right is denied us when fluoride is added directly into the public water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Dean, Julie Slavitt, Pete Matthews, Ted Kirsch, Amanda McMurray, Rebecca Poyuro, Glennevee Norton. Good morning. Feel free to identify yourself and begin your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council, for this opportunity to speak with you about the upcoming year's city education budget. My name is Rebecca Poyuro. I live in Roxborough, and both my sons attend Cookwissahican Elementary School. As you know, especially those of you who are parents yourselves, parents have long memories. We remember our children's first words, their first steps, and their first days of school. And public school parents in Philadelphia have added some other memories as well. We remember every single education budget cycle since 2011 and the cumulative impact they have had on our children's lives. Now, it's absolutely the case that the state-level budget cuts enacted in 2011 and continued ever since have laid waste to Pennsylvania's schools and made a travesty of Pennsylvania's constitutional obligation to provide a thorough and efficient system of public education to the children of the Commonwealth. And we have all been lobbying and demonstrating and testifying in Harrisburg regarding this point. While we have yet to see a state budget we like, we know that the parent verdict on our governors and our state legislators and transigents will come in this election year. It is also true that council has raised funds for the schools in 2011 and 2012, faltering last year when you depended upon cigarette tax legislation that never materialized. However, pointing fingers at Harrisburg while accurate is not an actual solution to the funding crisis leaving our children bereft right now. We cannot depend upon a magic rescue, and we would all do well to remember that the city's brinksmanship strategy left last year left our kids empty-handed. As one councilwoman has said, ultimately, these are our kids. How many more would-be first-generation college students do we want to see not be able to go to college because they had no AP classes available, no opportunity to take the PSAT, and no counselors to help them through the process? How many more situations will we countenance where our children are not safe because of inadequate adult supervision, such as at Bartram High School? How many deaths are we willing to witness for lack of nurses in schools? The answer obviously has to be none. If the city of Philadelphia wants to hold up its head and say it is a world-class city, it needs to do right by its youngest citizens. City council needs to dedicate recurring, sustainable funding to our children's schools. There's $120 million in sales tax exemption money on the table right now, and city council needs to stop delaying and dedicate all of it to the schools. In addition, council needs to shift the millage rates in order to raise $50 million more, and any dithering and finger-pointing on these matters right now, and our children are lost. This year was brutal enough. Thank you.
For the record, we've been joined by Councilman O. and Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown.
Honorable city council members, my name is Amanda McLeary.
Please pull your mic up, we can't hear you at all. And we need you to talk louder.
Honorable city council members, my name is Amanda McLeary, and I am a victim of water fluoridation. The city needs to stop spending money on a program that harms your citizens. I have been poisoned by fluoride, and I have dental fluorosis. The only reason I have fluorosis is because I ingested too much fluoride as my teeth were developing. My body couldn't handle the copious amounts of fluoride in my water, and it damaged my teeth. My teeth have been insulted for as long as I can remember. My teeth, they're yellowed and mottled, and they're sensitive to heat and cold. My fluorosis affected my self-confidence and shaped who I am today. The ADA states that fluorosis is simply a cosmetic issue, but I can tell them otherwise. I live with it every day of my life. Is the ADA or the city going to pay for me to have my smile back untainted as I was born? Are they going to restore what was robbed of me? Is the Department of Public Health going to pay for any related dental work? They promote water fluoridation, but what about me and my teeth? According to the CDC, dental fluorosis affects 41% of teenagers, and the number is growing due to the increased presence of fluoride in our environment. The number could be higher now in Philadelphia due to poor socioeconomic groups. African-Americans and Hispanics are genetically predisposed to fluorosis. Philadelphia is an ethnically diverse city. Obviously, this is a pressing issue. Fluoride harms people more who have poor nutrition, particularly diets low in calcium and magnesium, which competes with fluoride for uptake in the body. So there are not sufficient nutrients for more fluoride to be absorbed. We are being robbed of our healthy teeth, exactly the opposite of what fluoride propaganda claims. Please protect us from fluoride. We are being harmed by too much fluoride exposure from fluoride pesticides working their way into the food chain and by water fluoridation. Fluoride is a poison, it's not a nutrient, and should be treated as such. We should be protected from fluoride, not dosed with it. Please stop paying for a chemical which has robbed me and countless others of their smiles and good health. Fluoridation is entirely unnecessary. There is no sane reason to spend millions of dollars to buy neurotoxins every year. This money can be allocated for better reasons. It does so much harm, it shouldn't be added to our water. There are millions of things it can be added to. There's people here talking about giving the money for the schools. I'm trying to present you with a way to save millions of dollars a year. I think it's something to consider. So please don't allow another generation of Philadelphians to be robbed of their healthy teeth. Please do the right thing and protect us from fluoride. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Not everybody at one time. Mary Dean, Julie... Julie, Julie Slavitt. Thank you. Pete Matthews. And Ted Kirsch. Sit at the table.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Mary Dean, I'm the principal of the West Philadelphia High School. My students, teachers, and I have come to city council today to ask that you find an adequate, an adequate funding source that will continuously fund our public schools. There is no reason why city council and a city the size of Philadelphia has to have a funding issue in the public school system year after year after year. You make, you make it seem that our students, our parents, and our schools are not a priority in this city. Again, it is important that we fund our public schools and that we become a priority in a first-class city like Philadelphia. I ask council to consider our options and have a continuous funding source that will make our schools a priority in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, and we thank you for your assistance in having your school open. We know you had some guests from Africa, and you've been very open and willing to work with everyone. I'm hoping that through all of this, that we can help our students get all the help they need at West Philadelphia High School, and we thank you for your commitment and leadership.
Thank you. The delegation, Councilwoman, the delegation from Africa wants us to start an exchange program with our West Philadelphia High School students.
Yes.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
Yes, I'm on top of it, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
We've been talking about it for many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on America's bold city budget.
Thank you.
My name is Pete Matthews, and I'm president of ASME District Council 33, the City Municipal Workers Union. I'm here as the voice of 10,000 of the hardest-working, most dedicated union women and men who work for this city. District Council 33 has made every effort to negotiate a fair contract settlement over the years since I have testified before this council in the past year. District Council 33 wants to take this opportunity to thank city council for their letter of support to the mayor on February 24th of this year, expressing their gratitude to the heroes of this harsh winter. The hard-working municipal employees braving freezing temperatures and long hours to keep our streets passable and our most vulnerable, safe, and warm. Despite our disagreements with the city, our members in all departments continue to work hard for the city and our ultimate customers, the citizens of Philadelphia, while enduring a five-year wage freeze. We have contributed much in terms of work output and crucial support of legislative cost-saving measures the city has availed itself to, to balance its budgets over the past five years. During the national economic meltdown, the mayor asked and received our help for the past five years. District Council 33 has delivered for this administration, working with the mayor in 2009, we saved the city $35 million through staffing adjustments. Our pension trustees helped get the legislature in Harrisburg to defer payments to the pension plan in 2009 and saved the city $235 million. Our union lobbied legislative in Harrisburg in 2009 to approve raising the sales tax to generate new revenue that, to date, the 1% increase has generated $425 million. We support President Clark and city council on a proposal to split the 1% sales tax between schools and the city pension fund. Our union reformed our health and welfare fund to self-insure in December of 2009 and saved millions of dollars while instituting a member payroll deduction co-pay. We have not had a pay or health and welfare increase for over five years, saving the city millions of dollars. The economy is rebounding, and 2014 is filled with gleaming indicators on the city's financial future. This is in part with the help of District Council 33. The last time we met with the city, we stated, drop the furlough day proposal, and we can start negotiating. The city delivered their best and final offer, which included furlough days. It was rejected by the union. The city administration has testified in city council. Furlough days do nothing to alleviate healthcare costs and pension contributions. Overtime is an important sticking point in these negotiations. Overtime is not a collective bargaining issue. Overtime is a management prerogative and assigned solely by the city. We have nothing to do with how much overtime the city gives, and it can be reduced by hiring more workers. The city can stop assigning overtime anytime at once. As I've stated earlier, we have reformed our health and welfare in 2009 by self-insuring millions. The city administration and other unions have followed our health and welfare model. You have many decisions to make before the end of June on what course the city should take going forward. From the actions taken by city council so far in the formation of fiscal year 2015 budget, I believe you would agree with me that one of those decisions is to make sure that the city budget includes enough funding to settle a contract, to settle a fair contract with city workers. It is only fair for each of you to ask what it would take to settle our contract. For the past, for the past five years, we have been asking for a number to determine that. Now a number can be determined. We are willing to negotiate within the parameter of that number. I thank you for this time. I'm willing to meet with any city council person, either as a committee or individually, to discuss those numbers.
We, we thank you for last winter and for the years of service. We support you in a fair contract as represented by a letter we sent, and we, we just need to sometimes stop making excuses and make more commitments, and that's just what we plan to do.
I would just say, I would just say...
Thank you.
I'm not here to negotiate a contract. That's between the union and the city administration. But if we want to meet privately and go over some numbers where we can show you how we got to the determination of that number, I'm sure you will agree with us that that was more than fair.
Mr. Matthews, we know over the years that you've been fighting for a fair contract. We have no doubt, there's no doubt in our minds that you've done all that you can and that you've sacrificed for the city of Philadelphia. So we want you to know, we support you, we're with you, and we'll want to do whatever we can to make sure that we get past this and past.
I appreciate that, and just let me, and just let me say in closing, to explain a little bit more, you need that number so you can go forward in the budget, so you know how to deal with the budget. You've never had that number before. Factors have changed. Where we can show you what that number is, and we could, if we, when we get in the meeting and show you that we can negotiate with that parameters of that number that has been determined by the city administration, shows there should be no problem in negotiating this, negotiating this contract by the end of the budget. Okay?
We are happy...
Thank you.
We'll be happy to meet with you, Mr. Matthews, at any time. We're happy to meet with you to get the information we need.
Okay, we appreciate that. Probably within the next week, because we can show you the figures, and that, that would help us greatly in the factor determining the budget, and to talk to this administration, hear the numbers, how come you don't settle this contract? We got a budget to do, let's get this contract settled.
Thank you. Absolutely. We agree.
Thank you.
For the record, Councilwoman Bass is here as well, has joined us in chambers.
Good morning. My name is Glennevee Norton, and I'm chair of the...
My name is Glenneveen Norton and I'm Chair of the Americans for Democratic Action of Southeastern Pennsylvania. Our ADA chapter has had a long history of supporting public education. As an aside, I want to say that the news this morning from Moody's Investment Services certainly adds some intensity and urgency to your deliberations about the school district budget. ADA urges you to allocate all $120 million from the extension of the sales tax to the school district, which desperately needs this recurring revenue source rather than sharing those revenues with the pension fund. Given the reluctance of the legislature to address Philadelphia's school needs, it would be most unwise to turn down the agreement they agreed to last summer, which required 100% of the sales tax extension to go to the schools. Asking them to change that arrangement now surely risks the loss of the entire revenue source. Philadelphia's pension problem is so vast and longstanding that $60 million from the sales tax extension will address only a very small percentage of it. Conversely, allocation of the full $120 million to the school district will address a significant percentage of the school's financial crisis. No retirees' pension is an immediate danger. While virtually every public school student, including those in charter schools, has suffered or will suffer devastating losses in service if the $120 million is not forthcoming. Most of us never went to a school without a counselor, a librarian, a nurse, after-school activities, aides and adequate materials. But that is what the majority of the 131,000 district students have faced this year. Next year, many of the 60,000 students in charters will face the same thing. We cannot risk losing to the suburbs families with options and the tax revenues they bring to the city. We cannot risk failing to give all our children the resources they need to succeed in school. We urge you, City Council, to do the right thing. We urge you to fund our schools to the fullest extent possible, thus sending our students, their families and all Philadelphians a resounding message that you are committed to their future and the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your testimony.
The next group of speakers, Adam Bachman, Jeremy Estes, Jana Robinson, Paul Thurgatner and Robert Franklin.
Can you please come to the witness table to testify? Thank you so much for your patience. Anywhere. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name for the record and-
My name is Jeremy Estes. I'm a senior from George Washington High School and I'm here to share a personal experience to help shed some light on why our school district needs more funding. I was contacted by Drexel University for a full scholarship interview on March 19th and I was really nervous and I didn't know what to do. It was an exciting and major opportunity, but I didn't, I was lost and I wasn't sure what to expect. I was scared, this was like my future on the line. And at our school, we leave, due to the budget cuts, we went from six counselors to one for 1,800 students. And I decided that I needed to reach out to a counselor to help prepare me for that interview, despite the fact that I'm a nervous, insecure person and sometimes I was scared to speak up. And our counselor, Mr. Bachman, he is very busy and you can tell just by walking by his office, he's always looks stressed and he works as hard as to try to address every single student, but it's a formidable task to speak to everybody. However, at the end of the day, the day before the interview, I went to him and he sacrificed 15 minutes to hear me out. And during this little meeting, he gave me questions to expect for the interview and he really helped bring out everything from my brain to help succeed in that interview. He gave me brilliant ways to articulate my speech and he really got a chance to have me open up to him so that he could get to know me as well. Because the whole process from the months prior of applying to colleges and everything, I didn't really get a chance to sit down and talk to him because he had to handle 400 other seniors and their requests. And I came here today to share this experience because that next day, thanks to his advice, he gave me the courage to walk in there with my head high and my mind confident. I nailed the interview. The people from Drexel told me that I was an inspiration and they appreciated my story and it was all thanks to the help of one counselor. But the reason I'm here is not to brag about a scholarship, it's to tell people that we need more counselors because we have 1,800 students and one person. If you divide every single person for that time to talk to our counselor, it's physically impossible. But I feel even though it might be hard with your budget to allow everybody to have more counselors, it's more about looking at it from a human perspective. People like me are nervous and scared to reach out to other people, but that's the job of a counselor is to help reach out and take the time to get to know students and help them reach their full potential. And I feel as though there's a solution that's already existing within the school district. The school district's website has a My Learning Program online, which we use maybe twice a year. We have a My Learning Program online that we use maybe twice a year that we talk about our goals and setbacks and open up to a computer about how we can find ways to succeed. I feel if you hire more counselors back and let them become advisors to students on a personal level, that there'd be more stories about children like me getting full scholarships to elite universities like Drexel. And although obviously there's a lot of financial issues and calculating everything, you have to look at it from everybody's perspective. We had 20 students here to talk to you today and then we were informed today only three could speak. I have one story and I know this is supposed to be three minutes, but there's thousands of minutes here to talk to you and I feel like you have to let everybody be heard. So I want to thank you for the time to pick me personally to talk to you and I hope that you understand that everybody needs a little help from others and that's why we should bring our counselors back.
I can, I wouldn't have known you were ever nervous and so I appreciate what your counselor has done for you and we need more people like you to be coached to, to success. So thank you for your testimony.
Appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Janaye Robinson Wright and I am a senior at George Washington High School. Since the beginning of my senior year, I have been aiding in the counselor's office for our counselor, Mr. Bachman. My help was issued primarily during the college admission time, which included me helping peers meet college requirements, making sure that they took their SATs or ACTs, telling them how to apply and when to apply and when were the deadlines. Yes, this was a terrific idea for our school to have peers, aiding peers, but I myself am going through the college admission process and my knowledge is limited. So why not have people that go to college specifically for this reason, to help us? Sorry.
No, you're doing good.
The decrease of counselors have been and became detrimental to our students' education. How can we as school students go on eventually with only one counselor? There are approximately 1,800 students in George Washington High School and there is exactly one counselor. Suburban schools such as Counsel Rock or Laura Moreland have five counselors and 200 students per counselor. Why are we not treated as equal as they are? Are we not worth the same education as they are or the same assistance as they have? I am heavily invested in my education, why aren't you? This is an immense setback to our education. Hold on, I'm sorry. Do you all not realize how many students or how many seniors this year are not going to college because we do not have, have a lot of counselors to help us out at all? We only have one. There's 1,800 students and he has to assist and he does not even get to all of them, not even most of them. It's so hard to get his time and to talk to him. He does a great job at what he does, but it's hard to get to him. Maybe not even half our seniors are going to college this year because they do not know what to do and does not have the proper resources or anything like that to go to college at all.
Thank you so much for your testimony. But before you go, before you go, hello, before you go, what school, what schools are you considering?
Bloomsburg University.
Okay, what major?
Physical therapy.
Okay, thank you so much.
And let me say, thank you for your testimony as well, but remember, no matter what happens with this, with this debate, you've come this far, you can still fight people like Bill Cosby and others. My brother, who's a PhD psychologist, many of us have had issues with counselors, but yet we can make it, you can make it. Thank you.
I'm going to be interpreting-
Good morning.
For him.
Okay, I'm here.
Someone's gonna sign.
I'm going to be interpreting for him.
Okay, would you ask him to stand up? So people can see him.
Hello, my name is Paul Thurgood. I attend Rush High School. I am in 10th grade. I'm here to explain about sports, the sports program. The program is really wonderful, but the coaches are all good and all too, but, but the equipment and the communication needs to be better and everybody needs to learn who needs to be accepted, like him. He is deaf and it's hard to communicate for him in sports. But I need to ask for fundings because it's really not good with the equipment we have. And, and if we cut the fundings and we cut everything else, he wouldn't be here today, I wouldn't be here today interpreting to him and we would have never have met and it wouldn't be as fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you state your name as well?
No.
Would you please?
Robert Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, for helping us to understand.
My name's Adam Bachman. I'm the counselor at George Washington High School. The students here spoke, and I have some notes, but I'm going to put them aside after hearing the comment from Councilwoman Blackwell. The students here spoke about the need for more counselors, but it's really the need for more staff in general, individuals in the hallways. We have two, 1,800 students at George Washington High School. About 150 of them are going to end up going to good schools regardless. We have, a student went to Harvard two years ago, one MIT last year, three University of Penn this year. So we have a group of students that regardless of what you do with them, they're go-getters, their parents are giving them a little bit of guidance, they can come to me, I can speak to them for a brief period of time. But what I'm concerned about with is that middle group, that thousand students that are first-generation possible college students, okay? Now, when we say we can have perseverance and we can make it under any circumstances, I, I just don't agree with that. I lived in Philadelphia for most of my life. I moved out four years ago. We lived in South Philly at 10th and Oregon. I live in a wealthy suburban neighborhood now. The parents in that community would not stand for, "You need to have perseverance, you need to make it." At the school district where I reside, there's a thousand students. There's a thousand students and there's six counselors and these students come from high search economic backgrounds. But the parents there, whether you're Democrat, Republican, they demand a level of service because all students need guidance. When we look at these young men right here, this young man was intimidated to come to George Washington High School because he was deaf, okay? The program, La Crosse, allowed the opportunity for this young man to meet this young man and sign for him and he gained 20, 30 friends that love him now. So this is just a microcosm of how we need programs to allow students to develop these bonds, which will enhance the culture in our schools, which will then lead to a development of their love of learning. This is just one way to do it. Counsel Rock has a UN Models Program where they take kids to New York five times a year. It's 80%, 85% white. We have over 50 nationalities at George Washington High School. They can learn more from each other than those kids can ever learn from a textbook, but we don't fund these types of programs. In the community where I live, I have my daughters at a softball game and nothing bothers me more than, "Oh, what do you do?" I'm a counselor at George Washington High School. "Oh, you're there, oh, those kids." And I, I'm like, "What are you, delusional? What are you talking about?" If my daughter could grow up and be like Janaye, I've succeeded as a parent. This is a fantastic kid. These kids, these kids here and these kids over there, stand up please, stand up. They are not dysfunctional and dangerous. They are, sit down. They are not dysfunctional and dangerous. I had this conversation last Saturday at a soccer game. Somebody said, "Well, they're dysfunctional and dangerous, that's why they're not funding the schools." I said, "No, no, 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 no. The funding is dysfunctional and dangerous, the kids are not." I sit here, I sit here before you today and I was, as I'm a 39-year-old male Caucasian, some may look at me and say, "Well, he lives in a wealthy suburb." But some don't know I'm the youngest of nine children, raised by a single parent, raised in the Lindenfield Projects, which have been ripped down now. So when I wake up every morning and I had the resources to move to a suburban community, a lot of kids don't. ZIP Code should not determine the quality of education that you deserve. In closing, in closing, when they talk about overwhelmed and stressed, I'm not stressed because the job is hard. I'm not stressed because I have to take time to prep him for an interview or Janaye, who wants to go to out-of-state and apply to private schools 40, 50 grand, but I made her apply to state schools because we can't just apply to academically good fit schools, we have to apply to financially good fit schools. But if we take 1,800 kids, divide it by five, that's 360 kids per day. You're listening to 66 people today in organized manner. How can I meet with 360 kids a day? How can I do it? So although these are success stories and these are success stories, a lot of lives have been lost by this budget and we haven't even seen the real impact of it yet. And I know that you guys are advocates for students and if I seem passionate, it's not directed at you, please. I'm passionate because I'm so upset at what's going on with these guys and their families. So let's stop the nonsense, let's fund the schools and let's move forward. Thank you.
One moment, please. Let me say, let me say to you, thank you for your excellent testimony. If we had all folks like you advocating, we wouldn't have the trouble we have. Thank you very much.
Theodosia Hall. Kim, Kim Smith. Hadiya Trammell. Deandra Scott. And Aonley Murray.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Hadiya Trammell and I'm going to be telling you how MOTEP Institute Charter High School had an impact on my life. Dear members of City Council, Education is the key to unlock the golden door of freedom. George Washington Carver. Hello, my name is Hadiya Trammell and I am a senior at MOTEP Institute Charter High School. I've been attending MOTEP since I was in 9th grade and I can really say this school has changed my life. MOTEP is not just, MOTEP is just not, MOTEP is not just a school, it's another home to me. As a student, I learn and obtain new things every day. The teachers are not just here for a paycheck, they are here to teach us and- The teachers are not just here for a paycheck, they are here to teach us and make sure we understand everything we learn. MOTEP has hard-working, dedicated, powerful teachers and staff who do not want us to fail. MOTEP is an African-centered school, so as a young African-American scholar, I learned so much about my history and the culture of Africa. MOTEP is a great and a powerful school that I would recommend anyone to go to. This school has a college resource center and college counselor who helps every senior with their next step after graduation. If it was not for MOTEP, I don't believe I wouldn't have been accepted to 14 colleges and won a $1,000 scholarship. This school has resources for each student to get to, not like many other schools. Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world, Nelson Mandela. And with the education, hard work, and lessons MOTEP Institute Charter High School has taught me, I believe I, Hadiya, can change the world. And I am proud and blessed to say I am a student and soon to be graduate of MOTEP Institute Charter High School. So members of the City Council, please fund my school and other schools so the next generation can get their education too. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Please begin and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Marie. I'm a senior at MOTEP Charter High School. I'm gonna talk to you about a personal experience that I've had. I have been a student at MOTEP for three years, since my, since 10th grade. Prior to attending MOTEP, I went to Delaware Valley Charter High School. When I made the decision to move, I realized that the environment was a lot different from when I was at Delaware Valley. The teachers were, it was more of a family. It wasn't just coming to school every day to get an education. I felt at home when I came over to MOTEP. While at MOTEP, I have received 10 scholarship offers. I am the first female student athlete to get a Division I scholarship to school. I really appreciate, I appreciate MOTEP, I appreciate what they've done to help all of us succeed and move on past high school. Not, not everybody can say that they have a counselor to help them get into college and do scholarships, look for scholarships, and write college letters. So I was just, just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Deandre Scott. I have been a student at MOTEP Charter School for four years. MOTEP has changed my character completely. It made me a better man, and my character wasn't so bright. I wasn't pushing myself to be the best I can be. MOTEP has pushed me to be the best at all times. MOTEP has a strong voice when it comes to developing young African males and females. I can honestly say I'm very responsible, true to myself, and respectable. Academically, I went from having a 1.2 GPA to a ninth grade to a 3.0 at MOTEP. I wasn't the only one coming into MOTEP struggling with grades. Myself and other students took summer classes to bring up S. We did extra homework, extra classwork, and had extra credit to hit honor roll. Academically, MOTEP do not care whether you are an athlete or a non-athlete in the school. It's the most important substance, it's the most important substance a human can have, knowledge. Education is the key. MOTEP has one of the best athletic programs in the city of Philadelphia, basketball, football, and track. We have one of the best athletic programs because we are not just athletes, we are student athletes. The extracurriculum like football, basketball, and track is what motivate us to do better in school. It opened up eyes, it opened eyes to those who want success in education and sports. For us to keep up the good work, we need funds, not just for sports, but for the needs to be the best we can be. With that being said, MOTEP has top colleges, Arizona State, Alabama, Temple, University of Pittsburgh, Florida, and Penn State, et cetera, coming in and out to offer student athletes that can help the university academically and athletically. We also have colleges coming in and out, giving out academic scholarships. I am a former football player at MOTEP Charter High School that has a 3.0 GPA. I have 37 football scholarship offers, and I have 13 scholarships for academics. MOTEP has a 91.3 percentage graduation rate and a 0.0% dropout rate. And all seniors go to college to start their life on their own. Please give the generation after me a chance to become the best they can be by helping, by the help of hard-working staff at MOTEP Charter, in addition, at MOTEP Charter High School. In addition, MOTEP vision is to develop young, successful African-Americans to be the best they can be. We need more educated brothers and sisters to motivate those who don't believe to believe. So please, save school choices. I am because we are, and we are because I am. When I shine, the nation shines. When the nation shines, we all shine. Hold up. Thank you.
Let me thank you young people. We usually come up there every summer when you have your program. Dr. Cortez is a part of the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs, and he reports every year. We did it again. 100% of our students are going to college. So you make us all proud. We wish you all the best and God bless.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Theodisha Hall. I am a facilitator at MOTEP Institute Charter High School. With the class of 6254, please stand up. As I look around this room, I'm reminded that one of our most intangible rights is freedom and choice. And my concern is that's up for grabs. So I'm here today first because I want to speak on behalf of MOTEP Institute Charter High School, having their charter renewed. Because that's what parents, students, the community, and anybody that's interested in the longevity of a child's success, that's what they're looking for. I'm reminded of the goals that we should all have in common, and that's to ensure that at any institution, a school is working diligently to cultivate the idealisms of citizenship and participation, rights and roles and responsibilities in society. And that's what the students at MOTEP Institute Charter High School have. So that means despite how you come in, you leave out differently. There is a metamorphosis that occurs, and you cannot deny that. Any reliable measurement, any longitudinal measurement, I don't care what statistics you have, if you look at the contextual factors, you see that a child's true sense of self is developed when a culture, and they're in a protected environment, and they have a desire, a true sense of desire to give back, that cannot be measured. And that's what we're looking for. That's what you want as we sit in this chamber. You're looking for citizens, productive citizens. So let me tell you what my students have done this year. This year, they've read The Miseducation of the Negro, The Pedagogy of the Oppressed, The Other Bo Linn Girl, The Invisible Man, and they just finished their dissertation prospectus doing a methodology that most of you may not even understand what we're talking about today. So before you question what we are doing here, I ask you to take a look, walk around, listen. Statistics can't tell you everything. Thank you, Sante Sana.
Good afternoon. How are you? You have me listed as Kim Smith. I am actually Mama Adwa. I come first as a parent of MOTEP Charter High School. I have two roles because I am an educator there now as well. I have three graduates from MOTEP Charter High School who have gone on to, one, have received her master's degree in psychology and social work. I have one that is now presently in school for psychology. And I have a son entering the summer semester for business education. I am a product of African-centered institutions. I come from the Pan-African movement long before charter schools even existed. I truly understand the value in teaching our children about themselves. Every culture, ethnicity group in this city or worldwide teaches their children about themselves, about their rich history, not the history that continues to make them feel inferior. We found out that the public school system voted not to renew our charter. And it puzzles me how the checker, the Board of Education, who has failed so many of our children academically and socially, have the right to pass judgment on an institution that has proven themselves for nearly 15 years. I have a grandson who wants to enter MOTEP Institute Charter High School, not because I decided that, but that was because of his decision. How could I look at that face and say there will not be an MOTEP? We have, you have what's called AYP. They judge us for not meeting this standard bi-yearly, when actually we receive our children two, three, four grades below the grade average. How can they expect a miracle when they have been in charge of our children's education throughout the history and they continue to fail them? I am here asking and begging that you consider and investigate the standards that MOTEP Charter High School, and not just us, because I will not leave out the other charter schools who fight so hard to educate our children. But we should have the choice to choose where our children go. As an educator, when I see them young faces come in and they don't even be aware of who they are, when I say, "Good morning, black," and they want to fight me the first day for calling them "black," yet they can accept being called "dog" or "nigger." And then months later, when I say, "Good morning, black," and they showed to stand up with pride, this lets me know that it continually worked. So I come here as both parent and educator, begging that you take the time and investigate that decision and not close MOTEP Charter High School. Thank you.
Let me say that we will certainly ask Dr. Height and his officers to respond to the need. I know about you quite well. We followed you over the years and certainly support you. And certainly, we will ask Dr. Height to respond to us with regard to your continuum. You see, Dr. Walter Palmer, they're fighting, and they seem to have gotten punished because they were the ones who fought. And so certainly, we will ask them to respond to us about your continuum because obviously you're a wonderful place. I know personally, but I'm sure everybody can see what a great job you do, how motivated you are and how your young people succeed. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Dr. Long, Jenny Dong, Esmeralda Zaire, and Angela Bakiri.
I am Angela Bakiri, a 7th grader from Alexander Adair Elementary in Fishtown. It's one thing to fight for what-
Name your school again.
Alexander Adair Elementary. "It's one thing to fight for what you believe in, another thing to fight for what others believe in," said the brilliant James Walcott. "The Philadelphia School District has been having financial problems for years now. Every year, we are told that the financial problems are going to be fixed. It's 2014 and our financial problems are getting worse. It's so bad that students like me are now fighting for help. Cuts have been a very serious problem. In my old school, every 5th grader was supposed to take ballroom dancing. It was a tradition. However, last year, the 5th grade class couldn't take ballroom because we didn't have enough money. Not only were they kept from ballroom dancing, but also in the middle of the year, they found out that our 6th grade classes were getting cut. The entire 5th grade had to go to local schools that were inferior. Central High School at one point didn't have enough money to open their library. An alumni donation helped them open it up again, not the school district. Also, Central has only two counselors and 700 seniors. How are only two counselors going to help 700 students apply to college? That's unfathomable to even process. Extra, uh, curricular activities have been cut from most schools in Philadelphia. Seniors rely on scholarships to get through college, but no longer can. Sports have been cut from schools, and there's no after-school sports programs. I only give gym for 45 minutes once a week. It takes about five minutes to settle down, and we give 15 minutes taken off so the lunch tables can be put out. That's only 25 minutes of gym. Let's face the fact, school is not the most exciting place to be. The activities, children escaped from school. Now most students, now most schools don't even have them. And the ones that do, watch you get taken away from them as well. Schools have very little resources and equipment. My 7th grade class didn't have textbooks for math. 7th grade, the year that counts for high school, and we didn't have textbooks. And we're expected to perform well. Are you kidding me? Don't let me get started on the textbooks that we do have. They're like eight years old, which lack new information. The textbooks have profanity written all over them. Laptops that we do own are in such poor quality, they are dirty, slow, and we also don't have enough laptops for every student to use. That means only limited amount of students can use a laptop to work. You might say I'm mad at the lack of funding, but in reality, I'm fuming and seeing red. You know the financial problems are at their worst when kids are fighting as well. I'm sick of hearing every year that the problems are being fixed, but they're not. At least inform us that you can't fix the problem and stop lying to us. If school's for us kids is this bad, I'm scared to imagine it for my children and their children. Find the money and stop relying on teachers to buy their own supplies. I strongly believe that we need more funding in Philadelphia public schools."
I'm Esmeralda Zaire, a 7th grader from Alexander Adair Elementary in Fishtown. Is education even taken seriously to you? Maybe not, because you're failing to fund our schools. You and everyone say that education is key, but how? How is it key if we students do not even receive the education that we need for a competitive world like this? When you're cutting our funding, you're cutting our education. These decisions you make do not affect you, adults, or anybody else. They affect us, the students. We students are not always gonna be book smart, but we can be musical, artistical, and athletical smart. But how? How are we able to succeed and grow in these intelligence if you don't provide the classes or help students to grow in their abilities? "Find the money because our children are being cheated," says a former teacher, a mother, and now a children's homework helper. She was forced to remove her two daughters out of public school because they were not receiving the education they needed. We all aren't. Teachers using their own money out of their pockets to buy supplies? Students are having textbooks? It's sad. Also, the textbooks we have are outdated, tattered, and covered in profanity. Our future is like a flower in your palm, and you're all are picking the petals off the flowers, and sooner or later, all that will be left is your sorrow and remorse."
Thank you very much.
I am Jenny Dong, a 7th grade representing Alexander Adair Elementary in Fishtown. Whenever the school district cuts our education fund, it leaves a mental scar on us students and teachers, a scar that will stay there forever. We don't have much left, but they still continue to take. We're beyond grateful that we're receiving a good education, despite the fact that we don't have any textbooks for math. And if we do have textbooks, they're outdated. No workbooks for any subjects, laptops that barely function, and there's just so much more. Fortunately for us, we have determined teachers who try their hardest to create lesson plans with what they have. However, not all schools- However, not all schools are as lucky as us, to have teachers that actually care about their education. We are not just protesting for us to have a better education, but for all the other public schools in Philadelphia's education too. We are just one little school with a small voice. We have much to say, and we demand to be heard.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen O'Neil, Richard Migliore, and Marie Marius Kilbovich. Is Lisa Haver here?
Haver.
Haver?
My name is Kathleen O'Neil, and I have school-aged children in Philadelphia. I'm not here to talk about the 1% sales tax, the cigarette tax, the funding formula, charter school reimbursements, or concessions people want from the unions. You're going to hear from all kinds of advocacy groups on those issues, and you've already heard from those groups. Although I attend school meetings, read the paper, and online sources on school funding, I'm not sure the best way to fund our schools, and most parents I speak with don't know either. You see, that's why we elected you, and right now, you are failing us. I'm here to speak on behalf of the parents who are angry. We're tired, we're sick, we're sick of the blame game. We don't want to hear any more blame on Harrisburg and Corbett, on the unions. We don't want to hear you blame the SRC. In fact, we've even tired of hearing your sympathy, your sympathy for the plight of our children who face unsafe schools, overcrowded classrooms, schools with no nurses, counselors, librarians, or even basic supplies. Right now, we don't want your sympathy. We just want you to fix it. Restore our school budgets. We can't live in crisis mode year after year. We're at bare bones now. The children of Philadelphia are among the state's neediest, but receive less for education than the students of nearly every district in the state. This is a disgrace. Members of City Council, we hold you accountable as an equal partner in this funding mess. We are desperate for good public schools. We are public school parents, and we vote.
I am Rich McGlory, a 34-year veteran of the School District of Philadelphia who now serves as an advocate for the best practices in school governance, leadership, and pedagogy. I am a strong advocate for democracy in education and democracy in the governance of what are supposed to be our public schools. I am also a member of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools and a civil rights attorney. APS has within our membership parents of students who attend Philadelphia's public schools and both active and retired educators. APS members are primary stakeholders in our schools. I come before you to speak in support of Dr. Height and his request for $440 million in increased funding for our schools. That figure is the minimum necessary to provide Philadelphia schoolchildren with even a basic education. If by no means enables the district to provide a full 21st century education for our children, it is merely and sadly the bare minimum. That is not to say that I agree with the way the school district is presently spending our money or intends to spend our money. APS certainly is not in favor of wasting any more money on the privatization of the Philadelphia Schoolhouse and the misuse of standardized testing, which harms our students and has caused the district's budget to double since the inception of the SRC, without any credible evidence of achievement gains for our students. For the record, I am also a highly qualified and highly experienced reading diagnostician and an expert on standardized testing, its proper uses and its improper uses. I ran a high school reading program at University City House School for almost 20 years, and Councilman Blackwell proudly, I love uni, there's no place like the uni. Born out of the civil rights era of you and I both know. APS certainly does not support the district's attacks on teachers and its efforts to impose working conditions on our teachers, simply because the teachers' working conditions are our children's learning conditions. It is immoral and counterproductive to balance the budgets on the backs of teachers, the very same people who heroically hold our schools together every day. That will only drive many of our best and brightest teachers away. They will be replaced with temporary "Teach for America" teachers, who most often have no real commitment to our city or to our children. What we do have a consensus on is that the present state of affairs is immoral, is detrimental to our children, and puts our children in harm's way educationally, psychologically, and physically. It is intolerable, and it is our collective moral responsibility to remedy this situation and fix our schools. I will wrap up quickly. Our first priority and our collective moral imperative and legal responsibility is to fund our regular public schools adequately. Okay? You know the politics, you know the macro-politics coming out of Harrisburg, and you know the micro-politics. Our public schools are supposed to be about the best interest of our children and the common good, and not those who wish to profit off of them. This is what we need. Harrisburg needs to ante up at least $350 million for our schoolchildren, and we somehow must find the rest to make up the difference for that $450 million. First, we need a fair and equitable statewide funding formula, which provides a reliable source of remedy, revenue, tax reform, which requires the wealthy Pennsylvanians and corporations to pay their fair share and reduce real estate taxes on our homes. We need to tax our natural gas resources, as is done in every other state. That natural gas belongs to Pennsylvania's citizens. A 1% sales tax increase statewide dedicated to our public schools. I support Dr. Height's request for $440 million. I only ask that he and the SRC adjust their priorities and end the privatization of our schools, stop allowing the Philadelphia School Partnership and the Gates Compact Committee to drive privatization and profiteering from behind closed doors, and most importantly, preserve true public education and democracy in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the important things you said. We're both sorry that University City High closed, and now we have so many other issues affecting that. Let me note that the President of Council has asked that we let you know that he is not here because he is in Harrisburg advocating for the money and the programs we need and the approvals we need to make school better. But thank you, and thank you for still fighting for the schools the way you always have.
And I support you, and as I told Dr. Height, I will go anywhere, I will say anything, and I will do anything to get the money for our children. And thank you for allowing me a front row seat for those kids, because they are the ones-
Thank you.
...that it is supposed to be about. Thanks.
Thank you. We know, Councilman O, that you would like to speak. Do you want to wait till this panel is finished, or would you like to speak now?
Panel's finished.
Thank you, Council. We also thank Councilman Squilliff for being here as well.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Haver. I'm a retired Philadelphia teacher, member of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. Good morning to all City Council members present here. I was here Monday when School Reform Commission Chairman Bill Green and Superintendent William Height spoke to City Council about the desperate situation the district faces. There is no doubt that the district needs money, and that political leaders could do more to get that money. Unfortunately, the district continues to spend on unnecessary and questionable programs when it does not have the money for basic necessities right now. There are 16 total certified librarians in the entire district. Our students' futures are compromised by the fact that there are not enough counselors, as so many students just eloquently testified, to help them fill out college applications or apply for financial aid. Lack of support staff has created dangerous climates in many schools, Barcham High being just the latest. So why is the district spending money on new charter schools, on three brand-new high schools, on newly-created positions in newly-created departments, and significant raises for those at the top at 440? Dr. Height testified that there are no programs in schools right now that can be cut. Members of our organization who have attended SRC meetings regularly since that body was created know that this is not the case. Dr. Height and the SRC are committed to expanding the Renaissance Charter Program, where a public school is given over to a private provider such as mastery schools, even though per pupil funding is significantly higher in those schools. The most recent case shows the determination of the district through questionable and inappropriate methods to hand Steel Elementary over to mastery schools. The district also has created an Office of Teacher Evaluation, although teacher evaluation has always been the responsibility of each school's principal. The district has recently created a new position, Director of Recruitment, at $90,000 a year, even though there are still over 1,000 people who were laid off last year, including assistant principals, secretaries, counselors, nurses, and teachers waiting to be called back. Monday night, after listening to Dr. Height and Chairman Green lay out the apocalyptic future of the district in this room, members of our organization, including me, attended an SRC meeting about those three new innovative high schools to be opened in September. I heard in council that neighborhood schools may have 40 students in a class, but I was told at that SRC meeting that the new schools could have only 20, that these new schools would be able to offer students personalized learning and stronger relationships, after hearing earlier that day already that schools already in existence would have even fewer support staff. We were not told, what we were not told is how much money these schools would cost over the next four years or where that money was coming from. I'm going to skip to the end here. Many council members on Monday expressed the view shared by many of their constituents that the SRC, far from reforming the school district, has plunged us into massive debt because of its lack of oversight and its unwillingness to advocate for funding needed to maintain a thriving district. Philadelphia should have the same rights as every other Pennsylvanian to have its own elected school board and to control its own schools. Members of an appointed body such as the SRC are accountable to no one except the politicians who put them there. Chairman Green was appointed by Governor Corbett, who's running for reelection. Mr. Green said Monday that he's met with the governor to ask for more funding. But what we really need is for Mr. Green to lead a movement of parents, teachers, community members who will go to Harrisburg and demand that the governor restore the funding he slashed, and to ensure that the General Assembly fulfills its obligations as stated in the state constitution to provide every student in the state, including Philadelphia, with a thorough and efficient system of education. Every time we figure out another way for the people of Philadelphia to pay more for schools, we give Corbett another reason not to. May I say that the members of the alliance, our alliance, second Councilman Clark's call for City Council to have meaningful oversight of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haver. May I note, whenever we're anybody fighting, anywhere fighting for education, you're always there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is Emergency University.
Can you state your name?
Dot, dot, dot. Thank you for your time-
Sir?
-and I appreciate your cooperation.
Sir, I need you to say your name.
I am talking right now. Why are you talking, mister? Tell me why, why?
We didn't get your name.
Excuse me? This is a way I witness in a school-
Oh, that was-
-when staff talking to a kindergarten student. I'm sorry. How you feel, sir?
I'm good. Just tell me your name.
I will, I will tell my name when I change my-
Yes, sir. All right.
I'd like to demonstrate you, comparing to you, we are talking about little kids. We are talking about little kids. You have a service them, and you have a power to take care of yourself. They have none.
Okay.
Next, next is first-grade teacher cry because of these behaviors, bad behaviors, where they are in class. Next, you are shut down your mouth with a brick on the street. Next, person who wants to stop fighting in the class is knocked down. I don't blame teachers. They have 30-plus kids to take care of, where some of the students have need one-to-one attention. I don't blame parents, adults. They have their weaknesses, limitations. I don't blame students. They have just example from us. I understand that they are, we are all create this situation. I understand that this situation are the best what we have right now. We need to act together, united, and change. So in my first demonstration, prior draft message, which I hear every day when I work in a central city building, there have three points: attention, emergency, and cooperation. May I continue? May I continue? Thank you, I appreciate.
Name?
My name is Marius Kilbovich. I am a parent-
Thank you.
-of three children in public schools, and I represent most, I think, families in the city. So I get your attention. Now about cooperation. To do, we need cooperation and communication. I see at least six main groups of public school: parents, students, teachers, school officials, city officials, community organization and group support. Parents need to have to be involved in school of our children, need to, not only to be welcome, but encourage participate. City and school officials or their representatives need to participate and donate their time and support in every school and their jurisdiction. They need to know what's going on. Teachers with parents and students from fifth grade need to meet weekly to communicate and act together on any important problems. All at the time, we need to be open communication with all, with and between all parties. We have meetings to update and exchange information and check progress and renew goals. The status quo is not always the same. We need to change it. All community organization and support group must be welcome with cooperation and gratitude for their efforts to help. Unite us as one, we can, unite as one, sorry, we can reach and manifest every goal. With one voice, everyone will listen. With one voice, everyone will listen. Let's talk about the money and how to spend it effectively.
Thank you.
Tax cigarettes? It seems so hopeless and harmful only to smokers. They looks like volleyball for to all of you. It doesn't look right. Same with sales tax. We need clothes, we need service. Here are solution. I propose soda tax. Tax for products with sugar, artificial and chemical unhealthy ingredients. Most candies, gums with aspartam, which damage our brain. Cheap energy drinks, e-cigarettes. All these product have our permission to harm us much as we choose to consume them for free without any contribution to the future health. What about big companies like Target? USA Today?
This is in my scared place. Can you conclude your testimony, please, sir?
Sorry, one minute. Thank you. Create to us and themselves slap in the face and reward ousted CEO with possibility fifty-five million. We all know it is not, nothing unusual. Financial institution, local sport, and media stars, and their, their promoters, some of them promote just opposite what we stand for: drugs, abuse. And many money takes from them goes to lawyers and victims without any share to community. TV media and share, not share enough airtime and attention to promote good example and action. They are free to choose as long we not show that we are actually care. Yesterday, forty-eight teachers are rewarded from local school. Last week, students from the mastermen win a national championship in chess. Behind them are great stories of successful achievement that can change and motivate a lot of people. We need resources to share this success to as many residents as possible. One of the greatest masters of all the time said, "Good leader shows the way, people do the rest." And therefore, the master concern himself with the deep, not the surface, with the fruit and not the flower." One sentence more. Do you recognize some quality in some of the leaders? President Washington, President Lincoln, Dr. King. Do not be afraid, dear councilmen. Do not be afraid, Dr. Height, to be a good leader. Lead us to change status quo of public school. Unite us, be good example, and we will do rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jamie Cudera, Elizabeth Moffett, and Eric Knight. Jamie Cudera, Elizabeth Moffett, and Eric Knight. Is Dennis, Denise, Dennis Devine here, Devin?
Hello, my name is Jamie Cudera, and thank you for listening to us speak today. I am here today to speak on behalf of funding for the school district of Philadelphia. I am a graduate of the Philadelphia schools, of the Philadelphia High School for Girls specifically, and I am the parent of two children in the public schools. We talk about how the schools need money and where that money might come from. I think sometimes we forget who we are talking about. We are talking about children, children who trust schools and adults to do right by them. We are talking about five- and six-year-olds at Jackson Elementary, whose kindergarten classroom is missing a circle time rug because it got ruined in a flood and there is no money to replace it. First graders at McClure who don't have the necessary leveled reading books to learn to read. Special ed students at Cornell who need basic math materials to help them meet their IEP goals. Fifth graders at Spring Garden, whose classroom has laptops, but they can't use them because the batteries need to be replaced. Second graders at Nevinger who need paper, yes, paper, and many more. My kids attend a great school, yet still they know school as a place where the nurse only comes on a few days. There used to be a police officer. There are no after-school clubs or activities. The musical was canceled due to budget cuts. And parents buy paper and pencils and spend a lot of time, and I mean a lot of time, fundraising to support academic programs. This is what we now call normal. And for next year, we are talking about the possibility of forty kids in a classroom? It is appalling that we would even consider less funding than the current unacceptable state. We all agree that the state is a big part of the problem. We are not asking the city to contribute the state's portion. We are asking the city to contribute the city's portion. We appreciate very much council's past support, but we are still not where we need to be. Too many past solutions have been patches. We need long-term, sustainable, adequate funding. Schools are central to our city's success and our city's reputation. Philadelphia, a city which we all love, is developing a national reputation as a city whose leaders are letting the schools sink. A city where our hopes for our children are so low that we do not prioritize investment in their education. I urge you to approve the sales tax to be used for school funding and work to identify other long-term, sustainable solutions. Our children deserve good public schools. We all deserve a city that cares about our children. Thank you.
Let me say thank you, Ms. Cudero, and thank you also for the work you do in the community. Forty-six war. Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Moffett. I'm here also to speak about funding for public schools. Ultimately, all schools are affected by the funding issue. Charter and public schools, and charter schools are public schools. I just need to say that for the record. I'd like to thank you for holding this hearing, this forum, and allowing this opportunity for me to speak on this issue. I'm here to ask that the sales tax extension be passed to generate the hundred-and-twenty million for our schools. Like many parents and guardians of students in the Philadelphia school system, I'm aware and concerned that the situation regarding education in our city is critical. Schools, which are essential to our communities and also provide educated, qualified young adults for the city's workforce, as well as the entrepreneurial community, are worsening under the burden of trying to do more with less. This year, with not enough personnel in the building, schools are struggling to handle everyday operations, like supervising children during lunch or recess. They are having to do without counselors and nurses. Some schools have seen an increase in violence and a decrease in academic, academic progress. Every year, for the past few years, the district has operated at a deficit. While the city has increased its share over the past few years, more is needed. Additional recurring funds are needed from both the city and the state so that the question of how schools will be funded each year will be addressed, and then plans can be made to at least stabilize the educational crisis in our city. The sales tax extension is something that the city does have control over and something that can happen right away. While this is not, I know, the only fiscal crisis in the city, it does have a long-term negative effect if it is not addressed. So again, I thank you for hosting this forum, to hear our concerns, and also about how this tax extension can be used to improve education in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
And I do want to say that my grandson attends National Charter.
Recognize that. We've been joined by Kenyatta Johnson, Councilman.
Hi. My name, my name is Dennis Devine. I'm a parent, obviously, and I'm here representing parents, friends of Adair, and I'm sorry, this seemed like a better idea two hours ago.
True multitasking.
Yeah, you said it. So you've heard, in fact, you heard from some great Adair students earlier. We're in Fishtown. We're a new group of parents whose kids, most of us are parents whose kids aren't yet of school age. And so we formed to, you know, like all the other Friends groups, to try to support the great education going on in the public education system and our local neighborhood school in particular. I want my kids, he would be kindergarten twenty-eighteen, I believe, to, to go to the local school. It's my dream. It's what we want. And I'm not an issue expert. I can't tell you better than some of the people that have just spoken to you about the, the politics and the issues. What I am an expert on is being a parent, being an advocate for public schools, and the message that you guys are sending by doing things like not devoting the entire hundred-and-twenty million dollars earmarked for the schools, to the schools from the one percent sales tax extension. I will say that, excuse me, I'm sorry, I will say that at this key moment where we need to invest in schools, where we need, I'm sorry.
I think he's more upset than you.
So the, the message you're sending to folks like us, who are not only trying to send our kids, but we're trying to talk to our neighbors to, to have all of us send our kids to the local elementary school to invest, to strengthen our communities, is that schools aren't the top priority. As so many people have said so eloquently before, pensions are a crisis, and I, I recognize that. I've looked into it, and I, I don't envy you the, the decisions you guys have to make. But the message you're sending to parents, some of whom have options, some of whom have means, or some of whom will, will scrimp and save to send their kids to private school or to move their kids out of the, the city altogether, and I, these are discussions we have all the time. You're saying, you're saying the schools are not our top priority. That has cascading bad effects for the tax base. Philadelphia becomes a place whose, whose Renaissance is really at risk, right? Because so much of the good demographics of, you know, the, the population going back up and all the resurgence you see in Center City and the surrounding neighborhoods, all of that is at risk if the foundation, the schools, are not strong enough to retain the people who move here in their twenties, thirties, forties, and then decide to have kids, and they see it as only a temporary option. So I just urge you to, A, put the entire hundred-and-twenty million dollars towards the school district as they ask, as the legislature approved. Please find another seventy-five million dollars of recurring funding. That hundred-and-ninety-five million dollars is, is what we need to keep coming back here. I certainly can't afford to keep coming back here. And I know you guys have a lot, you know, on your plate. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to all these testimonies, and might as well. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you so much for your diligence and multitasking, but also, please know that the reason why we have these hearings is to hear from you. Sometimes we, you know, we need folk to remind us constantly what our priorities are, and this is a budget process, so you're a part of that. So thank you for coming.
Eric Knight, Eric Knight, Milton Street, Nikki Avelli, Darren Spielman, and Donna Cooper.
It's now afternoon? Good afternoon, everyone. Just please, only, only thing I ask is that you state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Nikki Avelli, and I am here on behalf of the Philadelphia Youth Commission. Just some background, the Philadelphia Youth Commission began in two thousand eight with the purpose of representing Philadelphia's youth in public hearings and providing testimony that reflects the youth perspective. We work with the city, nonprofits, community organizations, and private entities to develop strategies to improve the lives of Philadelphia's youth. We hope that the testimony that we provide today will shed light on the thoughts and concerns that thousands of young people we represent. I'd like to thank the distinguished members of city council for allowing me to testify on behalf of the commission. I think it goes without saying that we have reached a state of emergency regarding education in Philadelphia, with the district facing an unprecedented structural deficit. As highlighted by last year's events, where the school district was facing similar financial circumstances, I lost a peer. Last October, twelve-year-old Laporsia Massey died after an asthma attack. Her school was unable to treat because of the lack of school nurses on staff. There has been much dispute on who is negligent in the death of Laporsia, but what we will never know is had she had, there was, there was a nurse on staff, would Laporsia have been here today? And it's not rocket science for anyone to really understand that the lack of funding is truly holding back the most important part of our city, and that's the students. Our long-term, economic, and societal goals we set as a city depends on the future of leaders. Boosting the city's economy and reducing crime and making Philadelphia a world-class city. But the question we are to ask ourselves is can we do this without education? In two thousand nine, only thirty-eight percent of Philadelphia's eleventh graders scored proficient or higher in reading. Only fifty percent of Philadelphia high school students graduate on time, more than forty percent drop out altogether. Only ten percent of these kids who enter Philadelphia public school in the ninth grade will graduate from college. Black men who drop out of high school have a fifty percent chance of being incarcerated during their lifetime. And increasing high school graduation rates by ten percent would provide, would prevent seventy-five murders, two thousand thirty assaults in Philadelphia each year, and a hundred-and-fifty murders and five thousand nine hundred assaults per year statewide. Those statistics represent why it is imperative that we as a city, state, and country take funding education seriously. I applaud our city leaders who, like me, understand the importance of education to the lives of Philadelphia youth. They ask for funding doesn't stop here, because we have to continue to engage the state and demand that it implements a student-weighted funding formula, which can help to ensure long-term equal funding for students in Philadelphia. We can no longer have students and parents in a state of uncertainty. We must put politics aside and place students first. Another student should not fail to pursue his or her dream of going to college. Students should not feel disengaged or drop out of high school, and another student should cannot be fed into the pipeline to prison because of their leader's failure to act and provide basic resources. The youth of the city are incredibly resilient, and giving them a chance is an investment in our city's future. We are to invest in the present to see a bright future. Therefore, as a student at the Science Leadership Academy, I ask that we provide the one-hundred-and-ninety-five million dollar that Dr. Height requests in sustainable annual funding for our youth. It's my hope that this funding will help to stabilize the school district and kickstart the rebirth and transformation of Philadelphia into a truly world-class city. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present on behalf of the Philadelphia Youth Commission.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon.
Yeah. I'm sitting here listening to the testimony all morning, and I said, wow, you must be clairvoyant. You know, I want to take you back thirty years. Had this exact conversation thirty years ago, when we couldn't get funding for schools. And at that time, I can recall having a conversation with some of our elected officials in Harrisburg. And they seem to be puzzled, and I, I remember saying, look, guys, we are legislators. We're supposed to be intelligence. We're supposed to be intelligent. Let me define that for you. Intelligence is the act of knowing, understanding, comprehension, knowledge. It is the mental faculty that produces acting, judging, thinking. It is the capacity for higher forms of knowledge and superior action. So we, as elected officials, have to come up with a formula to fund our schools. Now, if we don't, this is on record, if we don't, twenty-five or thirty years from now, there's not going to be enough money to fund our schools, and this is going to be a crisis that surpasses this one by light years. There's not going to be enough money. This is thirty years ago. So in my effort to do something about that, I said, we can't raise taxes anymore, so we need a voluntary tax. And I put a piece of legislation in, and it's right in here, it's all matter of record called Video Bingo. Some of you may remember that. I went to Bally's, had a machine made, brought the machine down here and showed city council people how it worked. It was approved unanimously. So it was approved, okay? People said, you can't get it out of... okay? People said, you can't get it out of committee. Two weeks later, I passed it out of committee in Harrisburg to the floor of the Pennsylvania Senate. This is the sad part about it. This is what happened. That piece of legislation would have raised, on the low end, $100 million a year dedicated to the public school district. I think Councilwoman Blackwell may remember when I brought that machine down here, and Councilman Coleman and every, all the council people used the machine. And it was approved at that time by the lobbyists for the school district, by everybody. And I'm saying to you, this piece of legislation was only for the city of the first class, only for the city of the first class. When I passed it to the floor of the Senate, the elected officials from the Democrat side of the aisle, because I was sitting with the Republicans at the time, I was a Democrat in Philadelphia, but it was expedient for me to be a Republican in Harrisburg. So, what happened was, it was on the floor, and the Democrats, the people that we elected at that time, told the leaders of the Senate that if you pass it, it's dead on arrival over here. It's dead on arrival. It goes nowhere. Scandalized by the Enquirer, the Daily News, got the articles, Senator Street is out his mind. We don't need, we need money for the schools, but the last thing we need is gambling. Video Bingo will give birth to casinos. Well, here we are. We got casinos, but we still don't have any money for our schools. We have casinos in Jersey. We have casinos in Pennsylvania. We have video online gambling in Jersey, but we don't have any money for the schools. In the Pennsylvania State Legislature, I have an experience that no other legislator has that's ever been to Harrisburg in Philadelphia. In the House of Representatives, I sat with the liberal Democrats. In the Senate, I sat with the conservative Republicans. So, I had an opportunity to study the mindset of the legislators in the Pennsylvania State Legislature. Now, we can get money from the legislature. It's not what we do, it's the way we do it. I'm gonna put a proposal for you, because I have the experience. I've saw, I've seen it work. I made it work. You have four classes of minds in the Pennsylvania Legislature. If you don't understand this, you'll run to Harrisburg and ask for something you can never get. You have the mind that is closed and will never open. That's the mind of the bigot. You have the mind that is open will never close. Those legislators are characterized by indecision. You have the mind that's open on the bright side and closed on the dark side. That's your optimist. And you have the mind that's closed on the dark side and opened on the bright side. That's your pessimist. So, we know that the bigots are finished. We get nothing from them. So, our core of people in the legislature is the optimists, the pessimists, and the worthless. The worthless are those guys that they have no decision about anything. Some of them have been up there for 25 years and never had an original thought. But we can use them because they're followers. Sometimes you don't need a lot of thinkers. You need some people that need to be told what to do. So, we can use those with no decisions. Now, here's what I did when I passed that piece of legislation out of the Senate. Comments that are made from the bigots are not worthy of repeating here. But I will tell you this. There's a group of people in Harrisburg that see Philadelphia School District as a bunch of ruthless, violent hoolums. That's a perception. A lot of times, and as many of us know, our perception is our reality, okay? You'll go into, talk to the conservatives, and they'll say, I'm not going to take my hard-working constituents' money and send it to Philadelphia to educate the offsprings of those, well, let me be nice, coons. They use another word, okay? So, that is a reality up there. So, what I did, I said to them, I want your money. I want you to give me anything. But I have an either-or proposal for you. Either you give me the money, or you give me the enabling legislation to raise my own money. Oh, you, by giving me the enabling legislation, you don't, it don't cost you anything. Go do your own thing. Fine. 6,000 Video Bingo machines in the airport, in beauty shops, in barber shops, train stations, would have raised at a minimum, this is 30 years ago, $100 million dedicated to the Philadelphia school. On the high end, our projections were as much as $350 million. That proposal's still alive. It's right here. The book was so interesting, if you go to the Legislative Museum out in Ohio, there's a copy of it, of that proposal, on record. Go online. Fine, you can find it, okay? On record. We can fund the schools. This is what we have to do. One, we have to get a dynamic program, double-digit program, with the mayor, the City Council, the council president, the state senators, the House of Representatives, all the members, that we have a no-nonsense policy in our schools that is second to none in the country. There will be no violence in our schools. Those children who want to learn will have an opportunity to learn. Those teachers who want to teach will be in an atmosphere that will be conducive for them to maximize their teaching skills. Now, we have an atmosphere in Harrisburg where you've already stripped the bigots of those preconceived ideas of our school district. So, now what you do, you go there with an either-or. Either you fund us, or you give us the enabling legislation to fund ourselves. It's very difficult, Councilman, for them to say no to everything, but it's not easy for them to say no when we go there with cup in hand. We go there with cup in hand, a cordon, a monkey on the back. Oh, will you please help us? We have to help ourselves, but we have to have the initiative to put them in a position where they can't say no, where they can't say no. This is what I would propose if I was in Harrisburg today. I would be up there, and I would have a piece of legislation on that I want you to pass this piece of legislation for sports betting in the city, in county of Philadelphia, with all the money dedicated to the Philadelphia School District, and you would have more than enough money. You know how much money is spent on sports betting? It would be a fight. Well, if you don't want to give us that, give us money. Can't say everything, no to everything. Can't say no to everything. So, sometimes, and I share that with you, because I think the experience that I've had down through the years is valuable to the legislators and the council people who are sitting in office now, if they would look at it in its totality. Look at it in its totality. We have money. You know, you have 75,000 black students, 25,000 Hispanic students, 19,000 Caucasian students, and others, okay? If we don't be creative enough and approach this with foresight, insight, mental perception, and come up with superior knowledge and action to resolve this problem, all of us are probably going to be six-foot under, and our children and our grandchildren will be sitting here arguing the same issue over and over. We need a steady flow of income, and it can't be real estate taxes, because we don't own enough real estate taxes. With the parents and the people, and the people in the, in the, in the school district don't own enough real estate taxes to supply. And you run into a problem with other elected officials when they say, I'm not going to raise my constituents' taxes, or real estate taxes, to educate your children. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it, and you've been kind.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Street.
If anybody wants a copy of my legislation, that was, that, you might want to give it to some of your legislators and say, hey, man, this can still work. Incidentally, just a couple months ago, they passed, the legislature just passed, and I have the numbers of the bills, small games of chance for the bars, for the casinos. It's all for the suburban areas, chances and all that. So, it's not so far-fetched today as it may have been 30 years ago, when there was no gambling at all.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you again. We would love to have it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilman Jones, for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you, Council, for your commitment to the education for all Philadelphia's children. My name is Darren Spielman, and I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Philadelphia Education Fund. Many of you know me and the Ed Fund. We have served our city's students, teachers, and schools for nearly 30 years. In all that time, we have rarely, if ever, witnessed a moment as critical as this one. We face a district budget that should be acceptable to no one who cares about kids' education, or the future of our economy and our region. As you know, we are $216 million away from opening schools in the same woefully inadequate manner we opened them last year. Already, caring, committed, competent teachers and principals are hanging on by their fingernails, trying to do the best for our children. The following facts are clear. We are here today first and foremost because of state cuts to education funding, cuts that impacted poorer districts most, and Philadelphia most of all. The state needs to act now to fund our schools in the long term, to build a fair funding formula that supports education across our state. Second, when we have had more reasonable resources, we have improved. From 2002 to 2010, as investment increased, so did performance. On-time graduation rate increased from 52% to 64%. Proficiency in math and reading more than doubled, from 20% to 51%, and 24% to 57%, respectively. We're only beginning to understand the impact of the massive cuts enacted since 2011, including laying off 3,885 employees. Cutting our way from bad to worse is not a strategy for success. Since 2010, the city's annual contribution to public education has risen by approximately $155 million. City Council deserves credit for this, so thank you. Similarly, districts across the state have been forced to raise taxes to cover education cuts at the state. The difference here is our district does not have taxing authority. They need to come to you. It is now the city's time to step up again. To get us where we need to go in a way that is sustainable, City Council needs to approve the use of the $120 million from the 1% sales tax extension for our schools, and we will need the $75 million Dr. Height and the mayor have requested. Crucially, under the current deal, the $120 million from the sales tax extension provides desperately needed recurring dollars for our public schools and funds our pensions at 80% by year 2030. Further splitting the sales tax between schools and pensions, as Council has suggested, makes very little difference in the health of our pensions, getting us to 80% by 2028, a mere two years earlier, but extracts a terrible toll on our public schools, students, families, educators, and even the long-term viability of our school system and economy. It's just not worth it. Given the above, I am concerned that to the city, I'm sorry, given the above, I am concerned that at the city, we may be waiting to act until the state acts. And up at the state, they want Philadelphia to go before they do. These are understandable sentiments, to be clear. But at the end of the day, they're adult issues and adult political assessments. It is certain that the state and the city need to put more funds into the public schools this year and ongoing. We need all sides to see this reality and get down to the business of doing what needs to be done for children, families, educators, and the economy of our region. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I want to thank council members for their attention. My name is Donna Cooper. I'm the Executive Director of Public Citizens for Children and Youth, and I know that it's been a long morning, and I'm proud of the council people who are here. You really show a strong interest in the challenges before the city, so thank you. I am here actually to speak to something that Senator Street spoke about, which is, we have enabling legislation to fund $120 million of school expenses, and I want to talk about utilizing that enabling legislation that's already been passed by the state. We are here in this chamber today in the midst of a crisis, because as Darren said, the state cut nearly $300 million from the Philadelphia School District three years ago. We are not here because this council has failed to act. We are here because the state took action to make our situation worse. And as a result, we are faced with a tough local decision, whether we permit our school district to disintegrate further and dash the hopes and dreams of our children. And of course, no one in this room, I know that, wants to happen. But while you debate the short-sighted proposal of shifting more sales tax collections to fund the pensions instead of the schools, the real perpetrators of our school funding crisis sit back with Cheshire Cat smiles, because they, because simply having this debate puts them, you on the hot seat, not them. Even suggesting that you need to divert more sales tax revenues to the pension debt is a red herring. Why? Because the current state law that directs $120 million in sales tax revenue to the school district also provides $800 million for city pension payments through 2030. So, the fact of the matter is that by passing an ordinance to authorize the existing state law, when you do that, you will be making a big dent in the $5 billion pension liability. The council and the mayor's, council president's and mayor's proposal to reduce the share of the sales tax funds to the district only helps meet our pension debt two years sooner than the current law. And while sitting here today, I was handed a letter in response to my letter, and that of many education advocates to the council president, and it further demonstrates in this letter that the, with the council president's actuarial assumptions, the 80% pension liability debt will be hit in approximately 2030, and under the current law, that will be hit in 2027 or 2028. That is not a material difference. To meet your pension obligation two years sooner in 2028 by decreasing the school district's resources now and every year until then by a half a billion dollars robs the educational futures of our children for rhetorical, rather than substantive gain. Instead, we urge the mayor and members of council to work with advocates like PCCY and others, the many who have been here today, to build support for the state to piss the cigarette tax increase, so that our schools can avoid the layoffs of hundreds of teachers. On top of that, we should be working together to build political support in Harrisburg to restore the cuts to the district, starting first with a full restoration of the charter school reimbursement. At Monday's council hearing, some members of council questioned why the school district's performance is so poor. Think about it. Lower Merion has twice the number of students who score proficient and advanced on state assessments. That's not a surprise. But they do so in part because Lower Merion spends twice the amount of money per student than Philadelphia has available. If it costs that much for Lower Merion students to reach proficiency, most who have parents with a college education, it's simply not reasonable to expect that our district can do much better with less than half the funds of Lower Merion. In fact, none of the successful school districts in this state are talking right now about how to find the funds for nurses, counselors, school administrators, or teachers. These staff are a given in high-performing districts like Lower Merion. If our district was to receive the full amount of funds requested for its budget, or $440 million, we would enter the ranks of the well-run and high-achieving districts in this state that have a librarian, a nurse, a counselor or two, an art or music teacher in every building. Our district would have enough teachers to reduce class sizes where needed, and help special education students achieve to their fullest potential. Our schools would be safer places with enough administrative support, security staff, because the funds would enable every large school to have an assistant principal, the number of security staff they need, and conflict resolution specialists, as well as noontime aides. These are the very things that the counselor in Northeast High talked about this morning. And we would give every child a chance to be in a club or a sport, because we would have the funds to pay teachers and meet the personal growth and enrichment needs of our children, spoken to you today by the children of Adair Elementary, my neighborhood elementary school. To us, this all sounds like pie in the sky, but it's exactly what the parents in nearly all of the 61 surrounding school districts take for granted. What's the difference about Philadelphia? First, those districts have taxing power. The Philadelphia School District does not. Second, those communities have rising real estate values, while Philadelphia's real estate market is sluggish, and where there is growth, the tax is abated. And I appreciate Councilman Good's efforts to change that. This council has been a strong supporter of this school district. However, our school district needs more than your moral support this year. It needs the full $120 million from the sales tax revenue and $75 million more. It's council, it's time for council to be strategic and enact the ordinance to enable the state- and enact the ordinance to enable the state legislation that permits the full sales tax transfer so that we can work together to put the focus back on the state to persuade the Commonwealth to do what is right by our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I guess we all can say collectively we miss Governor Ed Rendell.
Terrell Lynn McCormick. Terrell Lynn McCormick. Rebecca Johnson. Tina Christina Diaz. Dania Lingle.
Just for everyone's edification, we ran a little long. We are supposed to start again at one o'clock. Obviously, that will be pushed back a bit. And we will try to be out of here by one o'clock for the first session and with a one forty-five restart for the second.
Good afternoon. My name is Terrell Lynn McCormick. I'm the parent of children at two Philadelphia public schools, Penn Alexander in West Philadelphia and Kappa in South Philadelphia. From listening to Monday's testimony and your discussion with Dr. Height and Green, it feels like you feel like you're being held hostage by the SRC for the two hundred million dollar ransom with a gun pointed directly at our children, and you are not alone. I sympathize with the position you are in. You must respond to the ever-increasing request for funding from the district with little oversight or input on how it's run or spends its money. Public school parents are also funding our schools at ever-higher rates. This year, parents provided thousands of reams of paper to our schools. In addition, parents who were able, raised money to fund clubs, secretaries, counselors, and nurses. Basic functioning of our schools are being paid for by parents in this city right now. And yet, we parents continue to be left out of discussions about budget priorities and about school district decision-making. I have personally been asking the SRC since January to provide its deficit projections and begin a transparent budget process that engaged all stakeholders, including council members. The deficit has been ever-shifting from the school district. It was eighty million in March. It's two hundred million today. Without participation or transparency, it is very hard to trust the SRC. But the problem is, they have our kids in the balance. And while I'd like to think this latest Plan B of increasing classes to thirty-seven five-year-olds in a class with one teacher is part of political gamesmanship, I am scared to death after witnessing up close what happened this year over the summer at the start of the school. Our schools were not prepared to open. They were not ready to teach our children. My child sat on a ledge in a room with forty-plus children for over two weeks, while his roster continued to change for two months. Counselors roamed six to seven schools covering eighteen hundred children. Safe walks for children whose schools were closed going to new receiving schools were not safe. Leveling removed teachers from classrooms after two and a half months of school. Twenty percent of the school year was lost to churn and chaos. So when Dr. Height and the SRC threatened to lay off a thousand staff and increase class sizes to insane levels if they don't receive the funding, I think they will do it. They proved this year that there is no bottom to how low they will go. So even though it is not your jurisdiction over our school district, as the locally-elected body representing Philadelphia, I have to ask you anyway. Please find a way to provide the school district with the funding required to avoid mass layoffs and increasing class sizes. There are many solid proposals for how to do this. I make this ask today with a commitment to fight hard to regain local control for our district, to push for a fair funding formula, and greater charter oversight and charter reimbursement. While the school district is facing a budget deficit, this is no excuse for a leadership deficit here in council. These are our kids. These are our city's future. We really have no choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Tina Diaz. I too am a parent of two children in the public schools in Philadelphia. I was born and raised in Germantown, and while I was growing up, my mother was largely unemployed, and so we were on welfare and food stamps for much of my life. But I went to the public schools in Philadelphia. I went to Masterman and Girls' High and graduated. And that education provided me with the foundation to succeed in college. And so when I moved back to Philadelphia in nineteen ninety to become a lawyer, I thought about, where should I raise my children? Should I move out to the suburbs, like my peers, the other professionals lawyers were doing, so that they could take advantage of the schools? I said, no. I had lived in rural Connecticut for years as a chemist. And when I came back to the city, it was vibrant. It was alive. And I wanted, and I felt like I could finally breathe. And so I decided to stay in Philadelphia so that my children could have the same education that I had, the diversity of thought that the city of Philadelphia can offer students today. And so my husband and I, we've done that. We've committed to the city of Philadelphia. He opened a business here twenty years ago. He pays ungodly taxes, and he's often thought about moving out to the suburbs. But we have stayed because the pros until now have really outweighed the cons. But that balance is starting to shift, and it's being pushed so hard that it's about to crack. My daughters now are at Masterman and Henry, and I think as everyone has testified this morning, all of the schools in Philadelphia are suffering. They are suffering immensely. My kids, they ask me, you know, where's the nurse? And in Masterman, they didn't have a guidance counselor to help the kids apply to college. This is just the tip of the iceberg. There are so many other schools that are not magnet schools have it far worse. So how is Masterman, and let's look at that in particular, going to remain the number-one high school in this state? Isn't that an accolade that the city of Philadelphia wants to preserve? Isn't that important to the city? That's important to the reputation of the city. I can tell you that. And how are our children going to compete and go to college and be able to succeed and come back and add to the tax base of Philadelphia as I've done? So the schools, as everyone has said here, this is the fabric of the life for all of us here in Philadelphia. And now is where I'm looking, is my friends are turning to me and they're saying, how do you do it? How do you stay in the city of Philadelphia and manage to navigate these schools? What should we do? Should we move out to the suburbs? Should we stay in Philadelphia? And I want to keep telling them they should stay in this city, that there are so many different options. But I feel like I would be misleading them at this point. I don't know how anybody, anybody who is working in this city can afford to live here. If you can't send your kids to the school, how can you do it? My husband and I work. We work all the time so that we can stay in the city and we can provide a good education and a good life for our children. But we're at the breaking point. So, and I think as somebody else mentioned earlier, for the first time in years, in decades, the city of Philadelphia has seen growth, people moving back to the city. But that is going to change. I can guarantee you that if we can't do something for our schools. So I echo what everyone here is saying is, please, fund the schools. Make it so that my kids have books, they have rugs for their circle time, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Dania Lingle, and I'm a concerned parent of a sixteen-year-old daughter and a ten-year-old son. Our family moved here three years ago, and having the youngest diagnosed with learning disability, we entered him into the Philadelphia school system. He was placed in all-day learning support class with one teacher and one aide, and was moving on track, heading academically in the right direction. Then came the first round of cuts and layoffs. The next school year, he was placed in mainstream class, being removed from learning support several times a day, thus began the bullying. He was bombarded with slurs, name-calling, and tormented, causing him to go from a happy and social child to a quiet, stressed, and academically regressing student. Before the start of the next school year, we moved from Roxborough to Fishtown in hopes that a new school would bring new changes, all positive. However, after starting the first of the school year, two months went by, more cuts. Two fourth-grade classrooms were combined into one, mostly boys, thirty-five-plus students. This overly-large class situation did not blend well, alarming the principal to call in counselors to try and diffuse the situation amongst the students. All the while, my child is now being pulled back and forth to learning support as well as preps, and the bullying continues. He has further regressed educationally. Having dealt with this continuing situation, spending family time and money for outside tutoring to help get him back on track educationally and working with healthcare professionals so that he can speak to somebody about the stresses he's dealing with on a day-to-day basis at school, I looked for other options. Charter school is what I was told would be the answer. Unfortunately, with the application process as archaic as it is and the overabundance of applicants, meaning more people applying and not enough seats, I quickly realized that was not the answer. And then it happened. A situation that started as harassment of our child by another student during lunch escalated due to the lack of supervision. Then, at the close of the day, as the teachers open the door and some four hundred children go to leave for the day, all the while, a woman, the principal, half my size, is in charge, I'm sorry, is there to ensure that four hundred-plus students are kept safe. My son was assaulted in the schoolyard, thrown to the ground and kicked by the same student that harassed him at lunch, not understanding what he did to deserve this and knowing that he was taught never to harm anyone. During this assault, not one school employee was there to help him. It was up to a ten-year-old boy and a mother who was there to pick up her own child to come to his aid. Again, not one school employee. With the overcrowded classes, lack of supervision, and quite frankly, ineffective consequences, we're sending them down the wrong path. Our task is to create a safe learning environment, and it lies with all of us. So what I'm here to ask is bring back the arts, the library, the counselors, the school officers, and let's put in some playgrounds so that these children can channel their energy and negativity in other directions. It makes me sad, but I am here to say in public that at this point in time, I will be sending my sixteen-year-old daughter out of state to complete her high school education with family. And if it continues down the path that it appears to be heading down, I will be teaching my son at home. Thank you for your time. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you for your testimony. There are no words about how a mother has expectations at least for safety for their child. Education comes far after. The expectation that your child should be in a safe environment is just the minimum. And so...
What I read in the newspaper, as sad as this is to say, it's a minor incident what he's gone through. There are other children out there that are just subjected to this every day, and it's got to stop. Safety, education, we're molding the leaders of the future, and right now, we're not doing a good job.
Thank you.
Rebecca Johnson. DeeDee Risher. Mama Gail.
Can you say your name?
My name's DeeDee Risher.
Are there any other, is that it? So, all right, you'll be the last. We'll take a break until... It's one o'clock now, one forty-five. Unless you want to try to sneak in right under the wire, we'll let you do it. Come on up. Come on up now. I know one person from the school. You and one student, pick one. Oh, whoa, I'm sorry. All right. State your name and begin your testimony, please.
My name's DeeDee Risher. I live in Lower Germantown, nice town. And I thank you all for your attention. It has really been a long morning, and I appreciate how you're listening to everyone. My neighborhood is working-class, middle-class, and low-income. We're a family who couldn't probably choose income-wise to use anything but the public schools, but we're also committed to the public schools and public education. It's the cornerstone of democracy and a civilized nation in my mind. I have two children, sixth and ninth grades, who've attended and graduated from public charter schools. That's Whisahican Charter, and they're now in Masterman in S.L.A. Two years ago, and I would like to say that we have had amazing teachers and amazing and responsive administrators. I think the Philadelphia public schools are amazing, what people are continuing to do in the face of this stress. Two years ago, budget cuts forced my children's school to lose its honors program, no foreign languages, no music. This year, they lost both school counselors, extracurricular activities, gifted curriculum, support, nursing staff. We all know this story. Next year, it seems they will lose more. This is the thing that makes me passionate. I'm not angry at you, but I feel like we have enough money to fund our schools. We have enough money to fund our schools. The median household income in this city is thirty-seven thousand dollars. I'm not dissing, but the average public servant wage is well above seventy thousand dollars once you get into the management level. I don't know how you make all that money work, but I am frustrated that we're here every year wondering if we can fund our schools. And I think we lack political will and courage. In recent years, and many people have said this, for the first time in decades of my time in Philadelphia, blue-collar and professional families are moving to the city. They're drawn to it. They're drawn to the culture, the green vibe. They're drawn to the unique neighborhoods and the diversity, and why are they leaving? These families, the only reason they move and take their tax dollars into the suburbs, which other parents have said, is because they get very worried about whether their children can get a good education. This is not about funding some cesspool. This is about building Philadelphia's future. We're at a moment where we have more possibility for a diverse and vibrant city than we've seen in decades here. But instead, we're locked in this system which is fueled by increasing polarities of economics, which has kind of fueled a kind of educational apartheid. I won't really go around the room and ask people how many of you have actually chosen to send your kids to the public schools, but I would like to point out that we like to say we're funding the schools for our children, but for many of us who are making decisions about funding at the state level or local level, it really means other people's children, not my children. And when my son started his public charter kindergarten class, it was fifteen percent white, eighty-five percent African-American. By the time he graduated middle school, he was the only white kid in the whole middle school. And that was a gift for him and a gift for us. But what I'm saying is, if Governor Corbett's kids, if people's kids were in these schools, we would not be here every year asking, could we fund our schools? We would have found the money. I don't know where the money is. I agree with the parent who says, you understand this more. But if our kids were on the line, all of our kids, we would not be doing this. So I'm asking you to do the simple things. Certainly, extend the dedicated sales tax. Certainly. You know, if you want people to go out and get those deadbeat property owners and collect those unowed property taxes, I know a lot of parents who would volunteer to at least be the first line of defense. But I think we have to have more creative solutions, more sacrificial solutions, and more innovative solutions. As leaders in Philadelphia, you are trying to envision, how do we build a strong city two decades from now? And I believe the strongest Philadelphia will be a race and class-diverse, mixed-income city with green spaces. It exploits its beauty. It'll be like Philadelphia is, gritty and savvy and wise. And these schools are our path there. It's not a cesspool. Poet March Percy has this idea about courage, that courage isn't something we have or don't have, but it's something we call upon and we can draw into us. And this is the time where we need political courage. And this is a time where we need political courage and we need creativity. Leadership certainly involves diplomacy and working through the political polarizations in this state that you guys are always working with by knowing that our opponents do have a piece of the truth and trying to work together. But I also think leadership in this situation involves courage. Yes, our schools are flawed, and they reflect, in a way, our own societal wholeness. In fact, I think our schools right now are the primary institutions that we are building race and income apartheid in this country rather than breaking it down. And I believe that we can be a prophetic and long-view city that can, by funding our schools, figuring it out, how do you put together the 37,000 median household income with the ways we're compensating across the board in our government, even city government, that we can find a way to have a more transformative future? And if we don't, what we do are perpetuating poverty, hopelessness, racial discrimination, and we're teaching the kids, which are really other people's kids, not ours, that no one cares. And if you want to lead us toward the most dangerous Philadelphia in the world, you teach them that. I believe in your creativity and your courage. I believe in innovation. I respect many of you, and I believe in your courage. So thank you for listening. Pass the 1% sales tax and then stay up at night thinking of more creative things to do, more sacrificial things to do. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, grandfather, Central grad. Mother met father after a Overbrook and West football game. And if you know about that rivalry, there's no question why they later divorced. My children, public school. Their children, public school. It's my children, too. All right.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor, for your patience. Please state your name.
Okay. Ni hao. Wajini Dajahao De Ping. This means I greet you in peace in Mandarin. I'm Jatori Foster, and I often ask myself, what is a day like in a Philadelphia public school? I often hear the horror stories from my close cousin. He tells me of all the bullying, the drug use, the bad food, the dirty environment, and then worst of all, the lack of updated school materials. So I'm asking you, the council, doesn't the children of Philadelphia need a better learning environment, too? See, personally, I've been homeschooled all my life, and since I was 12, Mandarin Chinese has been my second language. Now, do you think I would have been able to have learned this second language in a Philadelphia public school? Now, my homeschooling experience has been the best experience of my life. Since I was in first grade, I was reading at an eighth-grade level, and now I'm a sophomore in high school, and I'm at a college level, and I'm advanced in math, algebra, and trigonometry. Where I ask going, I often question myself, is the public school system a day late or a dollar short? Sheesh, sheesh, thank you, and thank you for your time.
Ni hao and sheesh, sheesh to you. I've been to China as well. And who's this young man?
My name is Jabrill Burrell. I'm from John Whistah Elementary.
Thank you, and begin your testimony.
I won't eat my lunch because it's not cooked right. We need more recess, and we need more education supplies, and we need to stop bullying, and I will not use the bathroom.
We got to fix that. We have to fix that. Thank you for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we're wrapping up on my testimony. We have a couple of individuals who will be giving testimony. You know, it's disheartening when we're about to celebrate Brown versus the Board of Education, thinking about all that has been sacrificed for us to make sure that all young people get a quality education, and you have the actual students have to come out and advocate for funding for their own schools and thinking about what that means to their psyche when they're supposed to be enjoying themselves as young people and really looking at the big picture. And, you know, as we have done in the past, and council, we'll always try to -- we'll figure out a way to be supportive of our educational system. But our young people shouldn't even have -- we shouldn't even have to be in a predicament where we're actually picking and choosing. And I was listening to the testimony that was given prior to this panel. We talk about educational apartheid and the dynamics that goes into the modesty in Harrisburg and how, to be quite frank, you know, there's a certain level of a lack of value when it comes to those who don't support the educational systems, the urban environments, not only in the city of Philadelphia, but this is a national problem, and it's something that always has to -- and it's something that's always been going on. And I make no mistake about it, rather elected official or just as a man in general, the dynamics that are at play that, you know, we're building more prisons and not supporting schools, and that's done by design. And I usually, you know, measure my comments in this context, but I recognize clearly sitting here looking at these two African-American young men, who the system pretty much calculates their future based upon their third-grade reading level, which it should be the opposite. If you understand that a young person isn't doing good in their third grade, and you calculate how many prisons that should be built, then why not reverse that same process and start figuring out how do you invest in our children in the third grade so they can focus on going to college? And so, I mean, again, you know, we will continue to advocate and think outside the box, but it is disheartening, though, to sit here, see young people come to the council advocating, but I hope they also recognize that this is -- and to the two young men that are sitting here, that this is a role of advocacy. This is a fight for social justice. Getting adequate funding is your human right, and continue, because you -- two of you are our future. And so, continue advocating, continue challenging us as elected officials, continue challenging this system that pretty much -- a system that really put things in place that are designed for specifically African-American young men to not succeed. And so, I applaud the two of you for being here. It is what it is. And so, as I sit here, and I'm like, yeah, we're about to celebrate, you know, civil rights movement, Brown versus the Board of Education, you know, but I'm a clear -- I clearly understand the importance of education. And even beyond the school district, I encourage you to continue learning on your own. When you go home, make sure you continue reading. When you -- in your spare time, continue making sure you're going to the library and educating yourself, because that's pretty much what you're going to use as your weapon to combat this type of injustice. And so, I just want to commend the two of you just for stepping up to the plate. William Mackey, and it's ironic that he brought the two of you down here, because I remember fresh out of college, and I'm a public school graduate as well, Penn graduate as well. But it was William Mackey who had the citywide youth agency who recruited me to work with him and start teaching me how to organize at a young age. And I would never think that I'll be sitting here in the city council chambers as a former state rep focusing on this particular issue. And so, thank you, William, for the hard work that you're doing. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Councilman.
If I can get 30 seconds real quick, please. Thanks for taking us on early. And I just want to say, I heard people -- my name is William Mackey. I'm the youth coordinator for the House of Promise Youth Program in the Whistah section of Lower Germantown. We have Councilwoman Bass as district, and she's been very supportive. And thank you, Councilwoman. And behind me is the pastor and the church administrator. Would you please stand up, please? And two of our other students back there. Now, I don't know how -- first, thank you, Council. I don't know how the school district could take 40 of these young people in a room together. The other two young people, please stand up. Hello? You could not -- it's impossible to take 40 of them students at one time. It's impossible. Because I know what my son do in school alone. But anyway, in the after-school program, these young people come tell me they don't use the bathrooms in school, there's no toilet paper in the back. I mean, how do we allow to get so low? And my recommendation is to this council is that it's time that we go to Harrisburg and advocate to bring control back to Philadelphia. This council and this mayor, under the Home Room Charter, needs to have control of that school district. We should have been had buses going to Harrisburg full of young people like this articulate young man to go to Harrisburg, go to the Governor Mansion, go wherever we got to go. And like I say, 30 years ago, the late Lucian Blackwell and the late John C. Anderson would not have tolerated what's going on now. I'm not putting no bones at this council at all. I'm just telling them the way it is. That council fought and made people accountable with this school stuff. Somebody is playing political football with these kids' life. If we do not restore the proper level of integrity at the SRC and the district, this thing is just going to be sending our young people to prison. I mean, what you do, you're responsible for, but when young people don't have adequate books, the adequate lunch, I mean, food is important. You say the food is not edible, edible, or how you want, I mean, the right way. And this young man is homeschooled. He could speak Chinese for a long time if we let him go, okay? This is Lawrence Clark's son, who ran for council before. This is his son, very articulate, and we have a great after-school program in the Whistah section. We reached out to Dr. Hyatt and SRC and that administration several times to come support our after-school program. No avail. Unheard of. I don't understand it, but the Harrisburg leadership is different now than it was when they took it over. It's time to strike Harrisburg now to bring control back. Because I don't see the math. I don't see the math. How are you going to fund DC 33 and fund the school district increase? I don't see it. You know, I don't see it. Mr. Chair, I strongly recommend that this council put together a think tank and a strategy how we go to Harrisburg to bring control back to Philadelphia. And I also invite this council to take a look at after-school programs that are working, okay? So I just want to say thanks for your time. And it is sad, and I want to say to the councilmen, I'm very proud of you, Councilman. When I read your bio, all them degrees you got, wow, that's impressive. And I express that to my young people all the time. I would not be wearing Mackey if I didn't bring articulate young people here to do their thing here. This is yours. They work for y'all, okay? These councilpeople is elected under the Home Room Charter, and we got to hold them responsible, all of them. And they're nice people, but they got to be held accountable. And this council needs to hold the state accountable. I don't understand why we don't go to Harrisburg and get control back. People over there maneuvering to want to run for mayor, want to be the chair over there. We see what's going on. That's a game. But don't play the game with these kids' life. If you want to run for mayor, go run for mayor. You got to be the chair to run for mayor? Come on, not on these kids. We need to stop that, and we will stop it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Kershaw? Want to join up at the witness table? So after this panel, we will break. The stenographer has been a trooper. Every word, and there was a lot of words in here, she has put on the record, so we want to break. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. If you don't mind, is there a rule that I can't stand?
Oh, you can.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Several months ago, I decided, I'm not sitting to speak about our children. I'm standing. I'm not fighting, I'm not battling, I'm not struggling. I'm standing. I am named 38 years ago when I got married, Gail Cloudin, took on my husband's name, but later God named me Mama Gail. So that's what I go by. Before I begin, I'd like to say I'm hosting a Solutions Council meeting on Friday at 4:40. I told the district, we have people in our community that know the answer to all our issues. So 5:30 at 4:40, I believe we're in room 1173. For anybody that wants to come and talk about schools and education, please come. We're there every week. I've been involved in education in Philadelphia for almost 30 years, and one of the things that keeps coming to my mind is my daughter, who is 37, and daughter who will be 41 in a few months, they came to the Philadelphia Public School from private school, and I became a very, very involved parent because I was involved in the private school system. So I started, I put them in elementary school. One went to elementary, one went to public, excuse me, went to middle, which one was Daroff and the other one was Sayer. And I mention that because my daughter's first year in Sayer, she was attacked. This is the 41-year-old. Leah went to Daroff, and in fifth grade, we were told that they were now going to change the system to the middle school system. And going to Bell Telephone as a high school student, starting to work there, I knew that any time Bell did something and it didn't work, they changed it. If it didn't work, immediately. So I spent 14 and a half years there, learning from them. So coming into the district and asking questions, I want to say this, because this is important, the ego and the arrogance that didn't just start now. I spoke to a regional superintendent that was telling us the district was changing, and my daughter, being in fifth grade now, she was going to go to sixth grade, seventh, eighth in the middle school. And I said, well, is there a time period set aside if it doesn't work that you'll go back to the way it is? And the man told me, God rest his soul, your question is so ludicrous, I'm not even answering you. And that was my introduction in the public school system. So I became an advocate and have been one all these years. I want to talk about the contracts. We watch millions and millions of dollars wasted. We listen every month. I'm there every month. Wasted on contracts. We ask questions, and I'm saying that because to no avail, we don't get answers. And I ask, and I've pushed and helped to increase minority business. I've even helped a man get over a million dollars in contracts, only to have problems as a black man keeping, dealing with the district. So I ask you to ask questions again about the contracts. We have schools in the northeast while they're closing schools in other areas that are 200 to 800 students over in capacity, and you need to ask questions about that. While on one hand, they say, we have empty seats over here, well, you have schools that the capacity should be about 800 and 1,600. When you hear these young people talk about having one counselor, we thought that's how it was all across the city. We thought the same thing was happening all over. If it wasn't for the issues around economics, we never would have known that other people in other parts of the district was getting what they were getting. Parents and guardians are not encouraged to get involved in their children's education. I need to say that. Sacs are not operating as they should. As a parent involvement consultant, I can tell you, there has not been work for a whole year. I want to talk about Science Leadership Academy, which there's a $2 million leasing plus utilities, Constitution, I believe $2 million is paid yearly to lease it. We've got empty buildings. Start going and put those children in those buildings. Why are some children worth more than other children? I don't understand. I don't understand that. Putting high, putting public against charter schools, and I watched that at the district. Those children, many of them that are in charter schools are there because they were not served well in public schools. And I'm told, as I say it, Dr. Height will correct me, well, charter schools are public. Well, guess what? I say public schools, charter schools, because that's how I said all the time. And I'm saying that because many, many parents, and people don't know this, many parents were even banned from their child's school. So I have a problem with autonomy for principals, because that gives them the right to do a lot of things without folks knowing it. I want to mention engineers, safety and training. When you talking about helping and giving money, please have oversight. That's the word that keeps coming to mind. Ask about the two men that lost fingers this year. Two men lost two fingers, I was told, as a result of accidents with snow blowers. Many are working so hard that they have so many health issues. Please, oversight on every dollar. Colleges and universities are not doing what they could do for our children. I have to say that. I'm so tired of our children being the experiment. I am so tired of our children being used. I am so tired of us not, not getting what we should get. Our ancestors suffered long enough, they suffered hard enough. They died for us to have what we're supposed to get. And I'm saying, please, do not give one dollar without knowing what's been given and also knowing what they're gonna do with it. Again, millions and millions go out monthly. One example, one example, someone said, the reason why a contract was granted, because the company was gonna give, was gonna take the recyclables. We were told recycled items are taken by the city for free. We sit there at the SRC meetings as these contracts come over, and the SRC members don't have a clue. We've showed how money could be saved over and over and over, and we've shown that they don't know what they're voting on. Please make sure that you ask these questions. And there are advocates around that can sit with you and talk to you about what we know. We can go line by line. We watch money thrown away. And I'm gonna say this last thing, please. How is it that, and I'm at the UN often, I graduated forty-one years ago in June from West Philly High. I've traveled the world as a high school graduate. And I'm gonna tell you something, if our children get the basics, and I know this, the basics, they can do well. But doggone it, make sure they at least get the basics, because they're not even getting that now. Why is it that when a black woman comes to Philadelphia and tries to make a difference, that the hole becomes so big and so deep that it seems that it can never be filled? Why is that? That the debt keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger? And I'm saying that, God bless your soul, Dr. Ackerman, who was not perfect, and we know that, because we ain't either. But I'm gonna tell you something, this woman gave people jobs with benefits, people that had not worked and couldn't find jobs. And I think it's appalling that people are coming from all over the world as tourists. In Philadelphia, we see all these nice signs and stuff about the Constitution. When are we gonna live the Constitution? When are our children gonna benefit from the Constitution, while people can afford to come here from all over the world? And I've been to third-world countries. How is it that people from the third-world countries can come here and teach our children? How is that? And they don't have anything more than a table and a chair, doggone it, and they can be fifty in a class, because they understand education is the key. They get that. When are we gonna let our children know and, and really be that? Not just say it, but let them know that we can be what we see people coming from all over the world to do, sitting in those chairs. Last, 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 black people, we need more black people in front of our children. And I mean qualified black people. We have unqualified people from other races in front of our children. We have black people that are culturally connected, that should be in those classes. Why is it in Philadelphia, we can't find people? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mama Gail.
Please, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
This is Brother Jamir.
Brother Jamir.
He's a student at Latin, go ahead, tell him, tell him. I just wanted, he's shadowing me for a month. So I just want him to tell you who he is, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Stand up.
He's, he's why we're here.
That's why I wanted him to.
You're kinda tall, though, you fooled me. Go ahead.
Well, um, Jamir Robinson Marks coming from Boys Latin Charter School. Where is he? Oh, oh, Mr. Hardy, that's the CEO of my school. So, um, I'm, I'm actually doing my internship right now. And, um, well, my opinion on everything here is I find it really amazing how different, how, how many different opinions that people have about charter schools and public schools and the money that's going around and everything. And what I think is, um, I, I, I just think everybody should just have patience and take their time with each other and learn each other and actually not fight, but understand the struggles of each other and, yeah, that's what I.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is Celeste Marks.
Oh, really? Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, I met him. So I, I think I'm gonna be at Boys Latin, when, tomorrow night?
Monday night.
Monday night. So I'll see you then. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that in the third district? I'm gonna, I get a pass. Councilwoman Blackwell allows me in her district from time to time. All right. Thank you for your patience, and I'm glad you got a chance to hear a lot of the testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Education Chairwoman Blackwell, Councilman Jones, and colleagues of City Council who are here. Thank you. I'm Ted Kirsch, proud graduate of Philadelphia Public Schools, former history teacher in Philadelphia Public Schools, and president of AFT Pennsylvania. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. You've heard a great deal of testimony about the financial plight of Philadelphia schools, which have sustained cuts that are destroying our public schools and sending young families fleeing. You know the tolls the cuts are taking on students, teachers, and the educational opportunities being deprived from your neighborhood schools. On behalf of the AFT Pennsylvanians, thirty-five thousand members statewide, I wholeheartedly support the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers' call for the passage of several key bills before this council that would increase revenues. It would restore personnel, programs, and services to our schools and children. And you heard my colleague and friend, Mr. Jerry Jordan, speak to you this morning about these bills. Today, I want to talk to you about the key role that the public school system plays in the future of our city. You've heard about the plight of the schools, I'm not gonna go into that. But in Philadelphia, we pride ourselves on the fact that so many of us have moved from working class to middle class and more. Like my parents, many of your parents were working people. What helped us get ahead, finish high school, enroll in college, and become successful was Philadelphia's excellent public school system. Public schools gave us opportunities to be successful financially and join the middle class. The children growing up today deserve the same opportunities that we have had. As a South Philadelphia kid growing up on Second Street and a teacher who taught in every neighborhood, Thomas Middle School, Overbrook High, Ben Franklin, Martin Luther King, Massbaum, and George Washington High School, I know that strong communities are built around school, strong neighborhood schools. I've been there. As Philadelphians, we're proud of the city's transformation. The population is stabilizing, neighborhoods are being revitalized, including Center City, the Avenue of the Arts, Northern Liberties, Queen Village, areas surrounding the University of Pennsylvania and Drexel. But that progress is unlikely to continue without great public schools in every neighborhood. Too often, we hear that young people, the energetic, forward-thinking people who are rehabbing city properties, starting new businesses and reviving older commercial areas, start talking about leaving this city as soon as their children are born. We cannot continue to build Philadelphia unless every community is anchored by excellent neighborhood public schools. Neighborhoods that are anchored by great public schools are safer, more inviting places to live, and great public schools create jobs in schools and throughout the community. And good jobs and thriving businesses build our tax base. In short, great neighborhood schools are the lifeblood of vibrant communities. We must do everything within our power, including passing revenue-generating bills, to give our schools the resources they need to become a public school system that is great once again. Neighborhoods around good public schools like Meredith, Jackson, Powell, and others are proof that we need our economic and social future is tied to strong neighborhood public schools. And in conclusion, I urge you to join parents, teachers, clergy, and concerned citizens to fight for a fair and equitable state funding formula, for additional funding from Harrisburg immediately, and for an end to the School Reform Commission and a return to local control of our public schools. The future of our city and our children depends on rebuilding a successful public school system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
Thank you very much. Certainly, we thank you for your leadership at AFT. We thank Jerry Jordan, and I thank you for your leadership for the PFT, and certainly we concur with your statements. Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break, fifteen minutes. How many people here are, wanna testify on the list? One, two, all right. Let's call it two o'clock, okay? Two o'clock, we'll go, we'll be back in session.
Garland Sigler, William Mackey, I'm sorry, he already spoke, Judith Robinson, Diane Meneo, Karen Buck, Jamie Gaither, Patricia Cruz, Julie Slavitt.
Come on up to the witness table, please.
David Harvey, David Hardy, Laurelene Jones.
Sorry for the interruption. We had, in between hearings, life happened, and we had a major fire drill. I don't, I really don't know if it was a drill or not, but when that, you don't have to tell me, I'm like Pavlov's dog, you ring that fire bell, I'm out of here. We'll figure it out afterwards. So, good afternoon. Please state your name and begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Councilman. My name is Patty Cruz, and I am the principal of the James Dobson Public School in Manayunk. You're very familiar with it. I'm here to talk about the urgency around the funding for the public school system. And, you know, my K-8 school in Manayunk is a small neighborhood school, and can you, do you walk a mile and a half? Can you walk a mile and a half if you had to? Okay. Well, most of my students in my upper school could do that. My fourth through eighth graders probably could. All they would need to do would be to walk across the Green Lane Bridge, and they would come upon the Belmont Hills Elementary School. And they would come upon the great inequity that is going on here. I have, so in my school, I have three hundred students from K-8. I have a half-time counselor that I share with another school. And I have twenty-nine thousand dollars for the entire year next year for my students. That equates to about ninety-seven dollars a child for the year, which is about less than a dollar a day. Meanwhile, in Belmont Hills, let's see, they have a counselor for a K-5 school, full-time counselor, their class size is twenty or twenty-two, fourth and fifth grade is twenty-five. My class size is thirty and thirty-three. And if we don't get this funding, it's gonna go up to forty. Their enrollment is four hundred and sixty-nine students, mine is three hundred. For general supplies, books, and periodicals, they have eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars for next year. I have twenty-nine thousand. It is unconscionable. It's just unconscionable that we have a second-class thing going on here in the twenty-first century. Simply because the children live on this side of Green Lane, on the Green Lane Bridge, they have roughly a dollar a day for their funding. And they were to live across the, across the river, they would have everything they needed. And it's not, in the twenty-first century, this is not what should be happening. We can do better than that, and we need to do better than that. We are a city with a history, and it is, it's just, I'm here to speak on behalf of the students that I serve. That's it.
I just wanted, I'm gonna clap for you, please. It's in my, it's in my district. I, I want to thank you for the priceless attention that you give those young people. Whether it is engagement in a community or engagement in civic understanding, you do that well. And it, it isn't fair that depending on a zip code depends on the quality of education a child gets. And we hear you. And we, whether, you know, we're not gonna make excuses. We're gonna do what we have to do to make sure, make sure that you get the funding and supports that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You can state your name and.
Mr. Hardy.
My name is David Hardy. I'm the CEO of Boys Latin Charter School. I'm here today to talk about the budget like everybody else. Esteemed members of, of City Council, when I read the report of the district's presentation on Monday, I began to worry. SRC Chairman Green and Superintendent Height came in with the sobering reality of the current, the current fiscal condition and asked for enough money to keep it that way. They were only telling the truth. This situation is unprecedented. It is May seventh, and we have no idea what amount of resources will be available to open schools in September. And we seem to be asking for just enough to survive. It was not inspiring. That was clear from the responses from council. What I found particularly troubling was when my dear friend, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, questioned the reason, reasoning for opening up the three new high schools proposed for next year. I know Councilman Johnson is a supporter of public education, but when you, when all you hear is gloom and doom, requests for investments in new programs are never warmly received. I am here today to ask for more funding for public education, because there are schools in this city that are working. Schools where children are safe and cared for and educated, schools that produce meaningful results. Boys Latin is one of those schools. We graduate ninety-nine percent of our, our students, we, with a ninety-seven percent college acceptance rate. More importantly, only the five top selective admissions high schools have a higher college matriculation rate than our eighty-one percent. Our last graduating class, the class of two thousand and thirteen, had an eighty-four percent matriculation rate. We do not believe that there's another public high school in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that graduates more than twenty-five African-American boys. that graduates more than 25 African-American boys who can say that they send more than eight out of 10 to college. We have seen these amazing results for my young men. But there are, but these results would never have been achieved had they not been given the opportunity to experience a rigorous curriculum and challenging extracurricular activities. This is why I believe the investment in three new high schools is important. While I know it's not the popular position, I think it's next to impossible to turn around a poorly performing district high school. That may be why the Renaissance program has been their reform of choice. However, in a new school, you can establish a new culture and new expectations. The creation of new schools is essential to a redefined school district. The development of new schools allows for the closure of ineffective schools. I know, I know that both, I know that at both the city and the state levels, there are those who feel like we suffer from underperformance, both district and charter schools. While this may be true in some cases, it will not help the situation by limiting dollars directed to public education. The scarcity of funds has placed all, all public schools, good and bad, district or charter, in peril. It is time for all those responsible for funding our schools to step up. The current, the current rate of funding is excruciatingly insufficient. Yes, the state can do, can and should do more. That is a fight that we must engage. But we need additional city funding, too. The recent demands for more accountability and better results are valid, but whoever is tasked with the duty of making those improvement, but whoever is tasked with the duty of making those improvements cannot do so without the resources necessary to do the job. Sadly, we have reached the point, excuse me, sadly, we have reached the point where that will not happen without more money. Excuse me. Members of council, you are in a difficult situation. In your role of having fiduciary responsibility for city funds, you have the responsibility of ensuring the city gets value for the funds allocated. This is an important job. Anyone familiar with the demographics of those attending public schools knows that they serve children, the children who are the, are the neediest. Wasted or ineffective educational spending is dangerous in an environment of limited dollars. Yet you must provide enough funds to educate the children of this city who are dependent on public schools. Please help the children. Help us help the children. Hold us accountable. Hold us to the highest of expectations, but give us the resources to do the job. The job is to redefine public education in Philadelphia. This may require some difficult decisions, but without your action, our city will not survive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all vote, Boys Latin is one of the best schools in the city. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Lurleen Jones, all of you know her with her sports program in University City. Phenomenal. Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Lurleen Jones. I've been with the school district of Philadelphia for 42 years. Forty-two wonderful years. I've been retired now for five years, and I felt the need for you to hear my thoughts on this educational crisis. 2014 marks the 60th anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education, where the Supreme Court deemed that schools that were inherently unequal was unconstitutional. Isn't it ironic today, the city of Philadelphia, we have such institutions where the quality and equalness of education is not the same as our counterparts all over the state? We have a system that is poor, and we have an elite system. The SRC, in my opinion, is quietly and secretly operating business their way. Dr. Shirley Parham must be turning over in her grave because decades ago, she wrote about the history of Philadelphia public schools, where they had ward schools, where it was the haves and the have-nots. And we are still doing that same thing today. We are barking on this road due to the undermining, under-reporting, behind-the-scenes deals that I feel the SRC does. The SRC just closed three high schools, and now they are, they are opening four new high schools. Somewhere in my mind, that does not compute. They are advertising for new teachers, but yet they gave teachers layoff notices. So how is the opening of new schools going to help the crisis that we're in? The SRC accepts money from outside sources for the have schools, while the have-not schools go begging. It is amazing that we probably are the only school system run by politicians, lawyers, and non-educators. Our counterparts in the five-county area would not think of dismissing a nurse. I was appalled when I questioned the superintendent about the needless death of a young girl from asthma, only to have him say to me, "She did not die in school." Had there been a nurse, she would have taken the necessary steps to aid her. How do you allow a teacher to man the nurse's office two days a week? Sounds like a lawsuit to me. Montgomery County would not allow high school students to navigate the college programs without a counselor. Not only do our children miss out on the college procedure, but athletes miss out on obtaining athletic scholarships. This brings me into another point. The athletic program for girls, the athletic program for girls are lacking in the school district of Philadelphia. 1980, I sued the school district because of this very same thing. I hope I don't have to do it again. My other question is, with so many school buildings closed, why is the school district still leasing buildings? All of us in this room, whether we're professional, blue collar, white collar, we all must thank a teacher. A teacher is one of the lowest-paid professionals in America, and the SRC wants the teachers to give back 17% of their salary, or else they get threatened with job security. I had purchased for my granddaughter's school three cases of paper, rolls of toilet, toilet paper, paper towels, 24 boxes of tissues. The teachers did not create this, did not create this crisis. So what is the solution? It seems to me that city council should demand accountability from the SRC. They do not serve the children of Philadelphia. They serve the governor, the lawyer, the politicians who run this city. Isn't it amazing that there are no educators on the SRC? That's like having the plumbers and the electricians running the American Medical Association. And most of them have had very little experience with the urban school system. And we know that Bill Green is a Penn Charter graduate, whose background is private, is in the private school sector. City Council, it is time for you to demand to have a local board of people who have some educational background. It seems to me that you should be aware of the backroom deals that go on. There has not been an educator in charge of the Philadelphia schools since Dr. Constant Elaine Clinton, and it has been a downward spiral since then. Was this on purpose? Do the SRC think the electric in Philadelphia would get, would sleep and as they make deals? More schools are going to close, and new ones are going to open. City Council, I am counting on you to make this ship upright again. Please demand that the SRC be dissolved. Let's get a new one that will find ways to improve our schools. And just in case you need a staunch stakeholder in the educational process, here I am, ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The name of the author you referenced on the education end?
Dr. Shirley Parham.
Parham.
She wrote the history of the Philadelphia School District from 18, 18-something up until 1914.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Garland Sigler, William, Judith Robinson, Diane Meneo, Karen Buck, Jamie Gaethers, Julie Slavitt, Leslie Mason, Christina Diaz already spoke, and Pamela Williams.
George Richeza.
Did they make you absolutely last?
I guess so. Save the best for last, I guess.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Mason. I am the very proud principal of Thomas Mifflin School. I come to you today with 27 years in the school district of Philadelphia as an educator. In 27 years, I cannot recall any time like this. What we're facing this September is even worse than what I faced last September. When I say we had nothing last September, it's not hyperbole, it's fact. No secretaries, no counselors, no books, no paper, no pencils. I spent the summer going to, going out of business sales, going to the Cher Warehouse on Hunting Park and begging for supplies. I lost teachers. My class sizes last year were over 40 students, only to be told, "We don't have teachers that we can afford," split the classes and make split-grade classes. So then I had to make the classes into split grades, which has no basis in good practice. My decisions weren't driven by what I know to be best for my students, it was driven by the lack of funding. I have children in my building that have had three different teachers this year, all because they got switched around from teacher to teacher because we didn't have enough teachers. Next year, I am projected to have two less than I have in my building right now, and they're cutting two more teachers. So I'm looking at next year with over 40 again, and if you've ever housed 46 first graders in a classroom, it's no small feat. And that's what we're looking at next year. Next year, I'm looking at $11,000 for 300 students for the entire year. With that $11,000, which is about $36 per child per year, which, just like my counterpart is less than a dollar a day for my children, I am expected to buy everything they need. I can go out and I can get donations for paper and office supplies, and I can work with the community to get what we need that way, but I can't bring bodies into the school. I can't bring teachers into the school. I can't bring books into the school. I don't know that people understand that for one student to have what they need curriculum-wise, we're talking at least $100, at least, per child. I haven't been allotted that, neither have my children. In conclusion, with the help of city council, I'm hoping we can, we can obtain the funding we need to put the bodies back in the building, because right now, it's just me. And if you're in a school and you have just the principal is the only person who can tend to anything, as you can well imagine, the principal spends their day running and nothing really gets accomplished. My school is making gains, but they're making gains because of the dedication of their staff. I have no school police at dismissal. You'd have 300 children leaving at the same time. If the teachers didn't stay after school and monitor outside, I would have a problem. I don't have a problem. You don't, you don't see Mifflin in the news for a problem because we have people who are dedicated, both in the school and outside. My parents, I have a big group of parent volunteers, and my point is, is everyone is doing their part. They're doing above and beyond what we expect of teachers, what we expect of parents, what we expect of community members. But now we need the state to get on board and give what they are expected to do. I didn't enter education with any other reason than you probably entered politics, to serve. That's my job, to serve my children. That's why I'm here. And the reason you're here is you also chose to serve the people of Philadelphia, and we need to do a better job. I brought a letter with me that I'd like to leave with you, if I can approach, from one of my students. His name is Philip. And Coria put her name on it, too, but that's because she likes Philip. Philip is a big thinker, and Philip brought me this letter because, unfortunately, they're not going to get to see it. My kids, we were going to make a civics lesson about the responsibility of citizens in government. But Philip had some ideas for you on how you could raise funds. He also wanted to tell you his idea about selling tickets to see famous people. The only famous person he knows is his mother. So, so Philip has sent you some ideas, but that my seven-year-olds worry about fundraising and that that is their concern? Philip's very smart and a very good kid, but Philip shouldn't be thinking about how we're going to buy books. That's for the grown-ups. So I hope you hear me when I say, please approve, anything you need to approve to put people and resources back in schools. Thank you.
I love some of their ideas to raise money. And Rainbow Bloom fundraiser, Minecraft, Game Day. So we're going to put this letter in the official minutes and have it.
I'm so excited.
All right. You tell them it's a part of the testimony.
I will tell them. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Please, thank you for your patience. State your name and begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is George Richez. I'm the president of Local 32 BJ District 1201, and I represent school district employees. I want to thank you, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Blackwell, and our two councils, Councilman Owen and Councilman Greeley, for hanging there so long. I will be brief. I didn't come with an army, as you could see. Came by myself today, okay? Because I think things need to be said. And what I mean by that is, I also am an employee of the school district, and I will be starting my 42nd year next month. I've kind of seen it all, and the horror stories that I've been hearing today from principals, from students, from everyone, is, it's wrong and it's got to be corrected. And I want to thank this body because you are the one body that we can come to and air out our differences all the time. You can get anybody from community groups, to single parents, to a parent, to a child to come here, and you will listen to them. And I especially appreciate that from you. I have some testimony that I'd like to just say. As I sat here on Monday, and I was here Monday for the school district's presentation, I listened to the presentation from the school district regarding the budget. What I heard was, "Show me the money. We need the money here." There's no doubt about that. But it was a little bit disturbing, and I'll get into that. This council has done their part, increasing revenue to the district over the past few years in excess of $125 million. We personally came here for the real estate tax. Hard decisions to make, but they got made by this council, and it was appreciated. It was refreshing to hear President Clark tell the district that there must be transparency and oversight by council and more accountability. That's the first time that I've really ever heard someone tell the school district that they need to have accountability, and this body did that. When council members asked the district, "Are there alternative, alternative revenue streams?", there was no definitive answer. They talked about the cigarette tax and the 1% tax. I also support our PFT brothers and sisters, the community, parents and all, in approving that tax. When asked, "What is Plan B?", I believe they were perplexed, and the only answer was, "Lay off 1,059 members or employees, okay, and negate the contracts," which we worked hard to get, as you know, two years ago. Where is the plan to educate the children of Philadelphia? And how will that happen with less teachers, counselors, nurses, school police? You heard stories today from a counselor from Washington High School with his students. You heard a parent come in today and talk about her child being bullied in a schoolyard. These are issues because of the staffing levels that we now have within the school district. The support staff that I represent, 32 BJ members, made concessions of $100 million to avoid the layoffs of 2,700 workers in 2012. How's the money being spent? No accountability. Two years later, 32 BJ members number less than 2,200, and I think the actual number is 2,135. We've lost over 600 members in the last... We've lost over six hundred members in the last two years due to attrition and because the school district just does not want to hire. Two years ago, we were at twenty-seven hundred, all right, of bus drivers, cleaners, engineers, bus attendants, maintenance workers who clean, heat, cool, and maintain our buildings. I heard Pete Matthews come here today from DC 33 and talk about the excellent job that his members did during this cold winter. But let me tell you, our members got, came in at midnight to start buses, to make sure they were warm for students. Our building engineers came in four o'clock in the morning to make sure that buildings were free and safe and heated, okay? We had other staff come in, our maintenance, when we had freeze-ups at Edison High and other schools, and worked around the clock for weeks to get those schools back online. So I hear Pete Matthews, and I think our, our members also deserve some credit for the work that they did this winter, worst winter we've had in probably twenty years. The district has not hired staff. The district continues to hire management positions, which you heard also today. We will not be receiving raises in the foreseeable future, although some upper management have. In eight years, from two thousand and eight to our contract expiring in two thousand and sixteen, my members will have received a three percent increase. Eight years, three percent. If you put that on top of the money that we are giving back in contributions to the school district every pay, and my members give a range of forty dollars a month to a hundred and eighty dollars a month back in contributions to the school district because of the contract that we signed. We know the importance of children, we know the importance of education, and my work, my members and the school district employees are willing to bend and sacrifice for them. The SRC was formed to instill financial stability to the district. Twelve years later, we are in the worst financial shape that I have seen in my forty-plus years. It is time to disband the SRC and deliver it back to local control. We can do better, we can't do worse. Governor Corbett is using the SRC as education assassins, converting public schools into corporate-run charters, drawing increased taxpayer dollars. The governor's plan is to not fully fund education, not only in Philadelphia, but in the poorest districts throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Rather than tax the Marcellus Shale and close the Delaware loopholes, he is starving our children of their civil rights of proper education. Ultimately, his plan is to dismantle education as we know it. You, City Council, have the power to ask questions, and Ma'Ma'Gail said it today, she has asked, she has gotten no response back. I have asked, have gotten no response back. Jerry Jordan has asked. I think this body needs to question and needs to get answers back. I know, Councilman Jones, you asked a question on Monday about procurement, all right? We heard here, no toilet paper, no, no paper towels, no supplies in buildings. Well, there's an RFP out there right now for vendors to supply those goods to the school district, and I ask you to look into it and make sure that they're doing it properly so that we're not overspending and not giving it to somebody that they just want to give it to. We have the power, the people, okay? We must stand up for our children. They are our future, all of us in this room, parents, clergy, community leaders, education, and all of us. The time now is to say, fund our schools, fund education. I just would like to mention, that student from Washington High who said that he was on the lacrosse team, and he couldn't get supplies, and he couldn't get uniforms, well, we've been donating, my, my members have been donating for fifteen years to the school district, four hundred thousand dollars to the sports program in schools. I've asked for an accounting of where the money is being spent, and I cannot get it. The money was designed fifteen years ago out of an increase that we did not take to help the students get the resources they need in the sports program. The last accounting I got, it was for them, for physical therapy, it was for the teachers to get paid, it was not designed for that. We, years ago, provided uniforms to high schools. Overbrook, we talked about earlier, was one of the schools, and they had a patch on their shoulder that actually said, sponsored by Local 1201. So I would like to see something done, you know, in regard to the four hundred thousand that we are still contributing today to the school district. I would hope the school district today, when that parent came up about the bullying part of it, that they at least had a conversation with that parent to try to resolve what is going on at that school. There aren't enough school police, we know that. She said, parents have to take the initiative to get in between. That could be a recipe for disaster in schools, especially when you get to the middle schools and kids that are, you know, much larger. In closing, I would just like to say, in our contract talks in the last two contracts, we've asked the school district to put a delegation together to Harrisburg. We told them that we should partner with the superintendent, with the SRC, with you, City Council, with clergy, with anyone who wanted to get involved, to go to City Council as a group and lobby for more funding. We've made that proposal seven times to the school district, no response from the school district whatsoever. I think it's imperative that if we're going to make this system work, and we're going to need funding, we need to get all our resources together, and we're going to need to fight and fight and fight harder. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other folk here to testify? Are there any other people here to testify? See? Come on. You're the last, you're the last ones. We're only taking three.
Hi, my name is Liz Taylor, and I'm a teacher at Masterman, and also, as importantly, I'm a parent at Houston Elementary. I'm here with my colleagues from Masterman, as well as some of my students from Masterman, who have some things that they'd like to tell council today. And I know we've heard a lot of a narrative of, why give money to, you know, failing schools? What are we doing? But here, our students from the best school, not just in Philadelphia, but in the state, all of these students I've taught, and I can attest that they're extraordinarily hard workers, and they are where they are because largely of their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and please begin your testimony.
My name is Arnold Downing, and I'm a senior at Masterman High School. I really just want to say, my senior class this year, we got into Harvard, Yale, Princeton, some of the top colleges in the United States, and I think that's mainly because of the dedication of the staff that were at our school. Even with one counselor, we had counselors that came in to volunteer, and I think because of those volunteering counselors, that we were able to work and had the support to help us get into schools such as Harvard. I'm going to Northeastern University, and I know if I didn't have the support of my counselor, I probably would have never heard of the school, because I hadn't, you know, counselors help you look into schools that are good for you, and I probably wouldn't have gotten into the school that I'm very happy that I got into. I also want to talk about lack of resources. I know we saw a budget for our school where there's like no money for supplies, and today that reminded me, when I go into the bathrooms at my school, there's no soap. So how are there four soap dispensers, and there's no soap to wash your hands in? And I just feel like, with the decrease in funds, if there's not soap now, and we have more money this year than we will next year, then what is going to happen? There's broken water fountains, the floor, the ceiling has fallen, there's leaks everywhere, and we can't afford to fix it. But the only reason that we can keep going is because we have the motivation from our parents, motivation from our staff, and from our teachers who want to see us do good. And I feel like it's sad, like they brought up before, lower-performing schools, they need that support, because they may not be getting it from, you know, from home, they may be coming from a rough background. So not giving them money or helping them build up some way to get motivation by cutting their staff, by cutting their counselors, someone who could help them get into the Harvards and the Yales of colleges, what's going to happen to Philadelphia students' futures? And I just want to leave it at that.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name and begin yours.
Hello, my name is Otamose Higgins, and as she was saying, I go to Masterman, I am a junior this year, and so next year, I'm going to be relying on counselors to get into the college, college that I need to get into for my future. And if, like, Masterman currently is like one of the, is one of the lucky schools, like we have like a good, we have a good amount of teachers, we have extracurriculars, there are so many other schools that don't have anything, like they have like the bare minimum amount of teachers, they don't have, I think they may have one counselor for the entire house, high school. Like, here at Masterman, there are, they, like, we have a huge, like, amount, a huge base of parents who are able to, able to help. But at like other schools, there is nothing there to help them. So like, not just focusing on my future, but like all the others, like, all the, all the other juniors or rising seniors in the, in the city, they need, if we don't have that amount of money to fund the schools, like, they're, it's putting their futures in jeopardy, and then in turn, the future of the city in itself. That's all I was going to say.
That was a lot. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Thompson. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I want, I'm requesting that City Council fund the school district, because one of the things that's a passion of me is special education, and although I was not here Monday because I was working, Thursday, when they presented their budgets, they said if the district does not get the funds that they need, one of the things that they want cut was special education. My son lives with autism, and every service he has, he truly needs to be successful. They did not explain how, what they were going to cut, but I do not want, nor do I want other parents having to fight for the services they currently have, and I'm worried that those students coming in, or those students newly diagnosed, or those students who just need a little bit, bit of help, now we have to fight more, because the catchphrase will be, well, the district doesn't have any money, so we can't get your child that intervention that they need, or we can't get your child the speech therapy, or the OT, or whatever service that they need to be successful in a school setting. So whatever you can do, and I thank City Council, because every year, or at least the past five years that I've been coming here, you've always done your part, and that's hard to do, especially when you know, okay, they probably not going to spend the money right, but you keep giving the money anyway with the faith that they're going to do right by our children, not just for the Mastermans. Every school should be like a Masterman. My son personally goes to Maya, and while Maya's not that bad, I have family members that go to Overbrook, and Overbrook is terrible, in my opinion. You go, I've gone in there several times, you smell smoke, and I'm just going to leave it at that. That principal, he's a nice person, but he needs at least two assistant principals just to help manage the nine hundred-plus students that he has in that building. Again, he's a nice person, has good ideas, but he needs some help. I think what you can do as a council is, you can't dictate to the district how they spend the money, but you can't slowboat the money, meaning, you can give the money in increments and say, okay, we'll give you the rest, but you need to give us a bi-monthly accounting of how you're spending the money, and each councilperson in their respective district can say, okay, this is what's going on in my district, how is this money spent in my particular councilmatic district? So that is something that you can do. You don't have to give the money at one time, but you can say, okay, in order for you to get the rest of the money, and for December to February, you need to come to us in November and say, what are you doing? It can be a public here, it can be here, it can be at the SRC, but we believe the families, the educators, the staff, the community believe that since they're not going to answer us, they will probably answer you guys and say, okay, this is what we're doing with the money. Like I said, I appreciate everything that City Council has done. It's very hard to give money when you know they're going to mess it up, but we as families appreciate that you keep doing your part to make sure that our children at least have the funds available. And hopefully, the school district of Philadelphia will do what they need to equitably distribute the funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me say that President Darrell Clark is in Harrisburg today, because we're trying to come up with some oversight mechanism to deal with the whole issue of funding. People like me are for an elected school board, because I think we have a better shot with people from the community who see what's going on. But in, but what I'm trying to say, and going a long way around, is that the law allows us to appropriate money, but it does not allow us to tell the school district how to spend it, and that's a problem for us as well. But we're trying to deal with it, and we're trying to see if we can't change the law or influence state and local policy so that we do have the kind of oversight. When I first came here a hundred years ago, if you even asked or, or raised the issue, you were viewed as an enemy of education. So we've come a long way to even have the majority of our discussions about it, because we used to be severely criticized. So, so it's, it's a big issue. We certainly agree that we need accountability, so I guess we're both in the same place at the same time. Thank you.
I just want to say, it's been an experience today. It's been an experience because I saw students that care, administrators that care, that are fighting for the minimal maximum. And it, it hurts my heart to think that we're arguing about the minimum, as opposed to be pushing the envelope for even better. And I want to say about autism, that Councilman Danny O'Brien's not here, because he would still be talking about that issue right now, because it's near and dear and passionate to his heart. And I guarantee you, if he doesn't ask any other question about education, it'll be about continuing that service for your child and others. I also wanted to say that, that I want to thank my colleague, Janie Blackwell, who's taught me a great deal about the education process and fights for it each and every year, and to my colleagues that stuck this out all day, thank you, and I think I can speak for them and say, we've all learned a lot, because you guys care. And at the end of the day, we're going to fight for you, and I can guarantee you that. So are there any others to testify? Seeing none? This committee will stand at recess until Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen at ten a.m., at which time, we will reconvene in Room 400, City Hall, and thank you all.